Good afternoon. I will call to order the June 26th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Slack, Lukey Peer, Vreeland, and Rockwell. At this time, please silence any mobile devices and we can get started with our meeting. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the June 12th meeting. May I have a motion to approve those actions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to approve the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items will be considered on the consent agenda and which will be discussed. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item one is CAPTIA MAC Satellite Dishes at 2438 27th Avenue South. That is a conditional use permit for communications antenna. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one will put item one on consent. Item two is at 2514 Lake Place and 2505 East Lake of the Isles Parkway. That's a minor subdivision. Request and item two has been withdrawn, so we'll consider the withdrawal of that item. So if anyone was here for that item, we will not be considering it today. Item three is Rafter Nine Rooftop Lofts at 2909 Bryant Avenue South. Several applications for, in addition to a building there. We'll discuss item three. Is anyone wishing to speak on that item, just so I have a sense? Alright, so we have at least one person. Item four is Rex 26th at 2601 through 2621 Lyndale Avenue South. Several applications for a new mixed-use building. We'll discuss item four and is also, is anyone wishing to speak on item four? So we have a few people who would like to speak on that item as well. Item five is the Hiawatha Collegiate High School at 3530 East 28th Street. That is, involves several applications for, in addition for a school and athletic field there. We'll discuss item five and also, is anyone wishing to speak on item five? So a few people are here for that as well. And then, item six is 1500 Nicollet at 11 West 15th Street and 151510, 1518, 1538, 1544 Nicollet Avenue. Several applications for a new mixed-use building there. We'll also discuss item six and is anyone wishing to speak on item six? So, one person on that, so we'll discuss that item. Item seven is at 3145 through 3149 Hennepin Avenue. Several applications for a new mixed-use building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item seven? See, no one will put item seven on consent. And finally, item eight is a zoning code text amendment that relates to setback requirements in non-residential zoning districts. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item eight? See, no one will put that on consent. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, seven, and eight will be on consent. We'll discuss items three, four, five, and six and accept the withdrawal of item two. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll consider our Committee of the Whole consent agenda. And Vice President Slack, do you have an update from our June 15th meeting?
Thank you, President Brown. We had one item that we heard at the June 15th Committee of the Whole. That was a land sale for 3229 Fourth Street North. And the recommended motion was to approve staff recommendation that the plan, or that the item was consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
Alright, now we'll take that as a motion. Finding that item is consistent with the conference of plan. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, may I have a motion to accept the withdrawal of item two? We have a motion and a second to accept the withdrawal of item two. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our public hearings. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's items one, seven, and eight. Is anyone wishing to speak on items one, seven, or eight? See, no one. I will close the public hearing and may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second. All in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion and we'll start with item three. And staff is Ms. DeBorak. That's the Rafter Nine Rooftop Lofts. And I understand there are a few outstanding issues with some of the conditions there, so if you want to focus your presentation on that, that'd be great.
Well, and Chair Brown, if you would prefer, I could pause and just let the applicant talk to you about the conditions that they are wanting to speak about, unless you want a brief presentation from staff.
I think, you know, I think that's probably fine unless any other Commissioners have any questions of you. I don't see any, so maybe we can, we can do that.
Okay.
So, I'll open the public hearing on item three and if the applicant is here, if you could speak to some of your concerns about those conditions.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jay Eisenberg. I'm an architect and I'm representing and consulting with the owner on this project. The owner is here and we are waiting for the design team, St. Paul Architects. I think they don't quite understand, so hopefully they'll be able to address some of the issues. We're pleased that they generally will be approved for this project. We think it's a pretty innovative and exciting project. And specifically, we would like to address a couple of items that we would like to talk a little bit further about or be in discussion with. First of all, I'm assuming that item number one is a typo and that the landscaping would be required to be 2018? Or is that right?
I think typically there are two years allowed, so thanks for catching that. I believe that would normally be 2019.
2019, even better. I don't think they're onerous, but, so let's just go through, I guess, the items. Okay, number two, we don't have a problem with. Number three, we do have some questions about whether that is the garage piece specifically? I guess, Hillary, I'm not quite sure if you meant the addition of the garages to be set back five feet or you're talking about the addition of the entire project on the rooftop to be set back five feet.
I believe, and we can ask staff in a minute, I believe that relates to the rooftop addition as opposed to the garage addition.
Okay. Well, again, I guess I'm trying to remember if the entire thing is setting. I believe we would have some objections to that. I believe the project was designed to be forward on that and we hadn't heard that it was going to be a setback required for the rooftop. So I think the massing, I guess, do you have the packet of the drawings?
Yep.
Okay, okay, and again, I'm stalling a little bit for the design team to address this. They're involved in it from the beginning, but we believe the unit size and the rooftop is a small footprint and we're looking, we were looking for as close to that front setback as possible. Hopefully, we can continue that as we move forward. I just want to go through this. I believe item number four has been addressed in current renderings that will be shown, so we're good on, we agree to that. Number five, the design team is wishing to keep a sloped roof. They have specific reasons that they'd like to do that and I'd like to hopefully have them address that. Number six, at least 28 shrubs. I think that they have some specific reasons to use prairie grasses rather than shrubs. I think there's been some difficulty in maintenance on some of the shrubs, but they have proposing that they use prairie grasses in that area. They also are looking at number seven as trying to accomplish that, not through fencing, but through the potential plantings that they're doing. There's substantial plantings on West 29th Street recently that have been part renovated of that street and so they are hoping that that fence would not be a requirement, that that they can comply with the 60% opaqueness through plantings. The trees are not a problem. Number eight. Number nine, we think that that's going to just result in dead plants and snow covering and not going to be very successful as a strategy. I understand why it's there and why the site plan review would want that. Again, I refer to 29th Street as recently beautified and heavily landscaped. Corners of these properties, I think, will suffer. It's alley-bound almost on two sides. So, so that's number nine. Number 10, we're not quite sure where we would put a tree on this property. I don't know if Hillary had a location, but we don't know that we can accomplish that without taking out parking spaces. Number 11, we don't have any questions about that. Bicycle spots are fine. And number 13 is the trash enclosure. This is a really difficult site and it's possible that the owner could address this better, but again, the current Public Works access to pick up the trash is very tight and I'm not even sure that they do it legally, but we would think that a dumpster enclosure in this very tight thing would impact both the ability for the Public Works to manage their operations and also losing parking spaces. It's possible, I don't know. Bruce, did you want to be able to speak to that or not? Bruce, did you want to speak to the dumpster piece or do you want to just let that?
I'll wave it.
Okay, okay. The owner is much more familiar with the operation of his buildings. He's a former owner of the adjacent building on the other side, south on the aisle, alley, and he's been there for a number of years and is very familiar with how Public Works operates their trash. It's a very tight corner with telephone poles and things like that, so we think that might be an onerous obligation. No problem on number 14. So, those are my initial responses to the conditions. Again, I'm hoping the design team can get here quickly and address this with more visuals and more strategies for what they've designed.
Alright.
For now, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of this? Doesn't look like there are any. Are there any further questions of staff after hearing the applicant? If there are none, I think we have at least one other person who would like to speak.
So, just a point of order. After the public portion is closed, then the Commissioners have their own discussions and we don't have, do we have an opportunity to just reopen it?
Yeah, we can, potentially, we would ask you any questions or for a response as we consider all of this.
Okay, alright. Bruce, did you want to address the, yeah, the garbage, the dumpster enclosure requirement?
Yeah, please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Bruce Dachus and I'm the owner of the building. And I want to apologize for architects. I'm not sure, maybe because they're from St. Paul, there's a problem. I owned the fifth precinct next door for 20 years, which is to the south of this building, and now is five event center. And thank you, Hillary, for doing that. Logistically, it's difficult. We share, in fact, we don't have separate trash and recycling containers because we decided that it's more efficient for us to share them and not have four containers, so both five. And the office building share a dumpster for recycling and trash. It is really difficult because of the alleys and the configuration of the lot, et cetera, to get pickups. So, we have located, if you look in the top right-hand corner, that's where trash and, oh, I'm sorry.
Where is it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Trash and recycling are currently placed.
And we've talked, our people, Public Works, because there's an alley right here. Let me see where I am here.
The alley is right here. The alley is here to the right and then the other building is adjacent to that 20 feet away.
So, it's difficult to do pickups, so that's where we've placed the receptacles there. We've been cohabitating or existing, I guess, with Blue, which is behind us to the east and I'm in constant dialogue with them and it's never been an issue since that's been built or, nor have we had any complaints from any of the neighbors or whatever, because it's really not visible to anyone else but us and the apartments. I feel it would be a rodent harbinger if we have to enclose it, which would create more difficulty, so that's my comments and opinions on the trash.
Alright, thank you. And it looks like maybe we have one more speaker with the applicant.
Actually, here's, yeah.
If you'd like to state your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Eric Winter. I'm with, sorry, I'm with Alchemy Architects. Sorry, and I don't know exactly what we have already addressed. Did we discuss the five-foot?
Yeah, yeah, so it seemed like, to kind of recap, it seemed like the concerns that were raised related to the setback of the building addition, some concerns related to landscaping, and then the trash enclosure issue, which we just kind of addressed.
Yeah, so I think in regards to that five-foot setback, you know, there have been discussions of other buildings. It just kind of went straight up on the top from the existing building. And we've put a lot of effort into massing our building so that it's articulated in terms of sort of moving forward and back from the face of the building and being sort of generous and interesting to look at. So, you know, I think if it's sort of a design issue versus something that's practical, I'd be interested in sort of hearing what that critique is. The landscaping issue, one thing we've talked about is, so there's the recommendation to put in shrubs. We prefer aesthetically to put in grasses. We just think they look better with a more modern aesthetic and they're just easier to care for. There are lots of people walking their dogs up and down the street and the dogs cause trouble with the landscaping. Likewise, the fencing, we'd rather sort of provide adequate, whatever that three-foot height sort of requirement using grassing to sort of create a wall versus to use fencing to create a wall. The last thing I just wanted to touch on, I think, would be the landscaping in the corners of the parking lot. There was a recommendation to sort of remove some asphalt and put in landscaping. We put snow storage in that area. We just don't think anything's going to really live and we think it'll just look better and cleaner. You know, it's a nice new asphalt. Owner takes a lot of pride in the property. It looks really good and it's well-kept. So, you know, we think everything that's there is there for a reason. It's to look as good as it can look. So, I think keeping in mind that, you know, we're not trying to, not trying to do something in sort of a crummy way. We're trying to do everything in a way that looks good.
Alright, and I should mention, there was one other issue that came up and that was the roof line of the garage.
Yeah, the roof line of the garage. Jeff, do you want to speak to the garage roof line?
Yeah.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Warner and I apologize. We took public transportation, which was green but not fast and obviously we did not plan appropriately. You know, the garage we're showing is a typical gable roof, which, you know, ironically, most places it would be like, "Great, we love a gable roof here." Requested to do a flat roof and the flat roof, although it matches with the stuff we're doing on the rooftop, really doesn't kind of match the typology of what we would think of as, say, an old sort of metal shed that you'd sort of typically, and you can see sort of around downtown. And so, for practical reasons, it makes sense to shed this water on the side and then water the grats or the vines rather than the, you know, the door side. And from a sort of stylistic way, we kind of feel like it's a collection of these things, which are either, sort of neither new nor old, but have sort of an in-between sort of character to them.
Commissioner Lukey here.
Do you have a rendering of the garage? Because when you explain it that way, it makes more sense, but when I, looking at the massing diagram, it looked like a really generic residential garage, which is why I seem to agree with staff that it was incongruous with your design.
Yeah, so, we have one right here and the idea, the idea that we just sort of rented it as a mass because that's, that's kind of what we're, you know, it's going to be a, well, we have some flexibility at this time. The reason it's rented as gray is it was, is meant to be sort of like a weathered Galvaloon type of thing, you know, like you would see if it was there for, say, 20 years or whatever it is, instead of either, you know, bright red or yellow or whatever. Now, we obviously have some flexibility. We're showing vines on there now, actually, which doubles as sort of camouflaging the thing, but also providing a little bit more green as we requested by what the CPR. So, what you're seeing here is, also, the entry is sort of shown as yellow or orange in here too, to delineate that from, from the rest of the building. Here's the street side. You can see the garage there. And you can see where that, that unit is, you know, definitely different than the other, but I think, you know, in scale, it doesn't try to match the old building. On the entry side, then this helps to just say, "Hey, here's an entry. There's something going on here," while masking and kind of dulling out the rest of the very many materials that exist on the existing building. So, we're not trying to really cover up the history of the warehousiness of it, but just, I think, provides some visual interest in a way which is unique to this project.
And does it have an overhang or is it, as you have it rendered where it's at?
Yeah, what you're seeing here, I don't know, does the mouse show up on here? It does not show up here. What you're seeing on that kind of L-shaped, upside-down L shape, is it the requirements for getting the exit stair up there because they're?
Oh, I'm talking about that. I'm referring to the garage itself.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's meant to be, well, the requirements for getting it on-site without really demolishing a lot of the extra parking that's there means that we have to go with a flush garage. The nice thing is that, like, typologically, that's really pretty much in keeping with a lot of those sheds that you see. And I'm thinking about the ones that were on, oh, right on, well, basically, what was the north loop before it all went? Straight to five stories down there.
But we're in the juncture where the wall meets the roof line. Is it really, is it as shown here where it's?
Yeah, no, it's meant to be real. I mean, in that case, it's a lot like the units that are up on top of the buildings that were kind of flushed because of a lot of different reasons, but it's just a different shape, I think, because it's meant to act as a kind of a collection of things rather than all being exactly the same.
And then, on the street-facing wall of the garage, how long is that?
You know, 24 feet is a pretty standard dimension. That's what it's shown there.
Okay.
And it comes down, I mean, one of the nice things is that being lower is that that wall is going to be like eight feet tall. I mean, we're talking that tall rather than two feet taller, which is a little bit, but it's, it tends to reduce the size of that garage visually at the street.
Alright. Commissioner Kronzer?
Two questions. One, can you talk about how you're dealing with the water that's coming off of the garage at the public sidewalk? Two, can you talk more about this addition blob that's sticking out? I'd like to hear a little more thought behind that.
Yeah, sure. So, one thing we talked about was using the vines and this just has to be designed as sort of a detail thing, but, you know, collecting the water and sort of finding a way to drain it into those vines, making sure it isn't a hazard of the sidewalk. Obviously, we don't want sheets of ice coming off of it and there's just detail items, you know, that need to happen for that. In terms of the Bruce's unit, now, the idea is, and we're doing a modular construction, we're craning these pieces up there and we kind of want to just celebrate that modular aspect by having that read as something that's really interesting and really unique as a sort of item that's on the roof. Part of it too, by having it sort of peek out there, is when you're coming up the green line or when you're even coming down lagoon, it's pretty visible up there and it kind of pokes out and I think it's something that's iconic and just really in keeping with a lot of the architecture in that area, you know, being an entertainment district, it just really catches your eye. So, we want it to be fun. We want it to be sort of engaging.
Alright. Are you going to put a gutter on the garage? I'm just concerned you're kind of glossing over the water issue coming off the garage and it is kind of a big deal with all the pedestrians.
So, there's a lot of water that's coming off the building. It's not going to be anymore because we put a garage there, right? So, we can't, I mean, really, these are details that I guess if there's specific recommendations here. Obviously, we don't want to really shed right onto the sidewalk and we don't want to shed onto the parking area, you know. Unnecessarily, we want to retain all that water on-site, just like you want to do with water, right? And so, we don't have anything rendered and we're going to have at least this much room just so that we can do something with the water as it comes down there. And obviously, if we're going to have vines, if that's what seems to be acceptable to everybody, then that will kind of go hand in hand, I think.
Okay. Are there any further questions of the applicant? If not, is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item three? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, are there any further questions of staff or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Vreeland?
Yes, I would love to hear your last perspective. I'm assuming that these conversations have occurred and you have opinions about your recommendations. I'd love to hear kind of the reactions to some of the questions that have been raised by the applicant.
Well, during the process of writing the staff report, yes, I did talk with the applicant about some of our concerns and then we have discussed the conditions of approval since the report was published on the web last Wednesday. Some of the conditions, as you've heard, they are amendable to. As far as the building addition projecting over the front of the building, we have some, I don't want to say historic with a capital H, but we have some, not landmark buildings, but non-landmark buildings where we have had rooftop additions done to them where they have come straight up and the end result has not fared well from a design perspective, in our opinion. And so, we are recommending, or that is how we arrived at that recommendation, to have that five-foot setback to mimic what is happening on the south end of that fourth of the addition. I know it would take away from the design, if you will, of that curved front wall. However, the entire module, module could be pushed back possibly that five feet. You know, some, some, making different layouts, a different arrangement of having that moved back could be made. So that is why we have a condition about the building wall. As far as the roof pitch, we felt that having a pitched roof on a flat-roofed building was not similar and so we recommended, you know, we have a recommendation or a stipulation that we have similar roof pitches when doing additions and so we are making that recommendation. All of the landscaping, they are under the allotment or requirement for landscaping and so we were looking at the parking lot layout and noticing that there were areas that could be, that could be landscaped that, you know, that you could add landscaping. We're not suggesting that they get to the 20%, but we are suggesting that they increase the number of, the amount and then also add in trees and the shrubs as required by the ordinance. As far as the trash containers, those are located currently in this location. This area, now I've written all over it, so you're not going to be able to differentiate, but this area is public right-of-way. I think when Blue was built, the alley was vacated because the alley currently comes north-south and then dog legs out to Bryant on the south side of the building. We initially discussed vacating this portion of the alley, however, that would make the process longer given that it requires full council action. And so, the applicant at this juncture has decided not to petition to vacate that, that area, if you will. I am not sure, I did not have a conversation with Public Works. I'm not sure if it's needed for maneuvering of any sorts, whether it be trash or utility overhead. So, as they did not pursue that, recognizing that their trash is currently located in the public right-of-way, meaning to have that conversation with Public Works about an encroachment permit, but thinking that that would be a good location since they are sitting there now and could most likely continue to sit there in the future. But our condition is to have those enclosed as we do all trash receptacles that do sit outside.
And number seven of the screening, I don't know if there's actually a disagreement.
No, there isn't. Yeah, our screening requirement does not say a wall.
So, it's not a fence?
It's a combination of things, and so the grasses could get to that. If you chose to be okay with grasses instead of 28 shrubs, we recognize that grasses do get to a three-foot height, but our code specifically says shrubs, not grasses.
So we've crossed one off of potential disagreement. Okay, thank you.
That is up to the commission.
Commissioner Lupe here.
Yeah, I'm Hillary. I have two questions. Just real quick, I'm just looking at the site plan right now. Is it, am I reading correctly that there's a number of parking spaces that are crossing the property line?
That's correct. That is brought up in the staff report. Those, that parking that currently exists, that condition, if you look in your report, and I don't have a copy of that handy, again, when the alley vacated, half would have gone to one property owner, Greco at the time, it's no longer Greco, half would have come this way. And so since Greco constructed Blue, this area has been all asphalt. Whether there was striping there or not, it has been pavement. And so removing that would eliminate all of those parking spaces. The applicant, as noted in the staff report, is working with the current property owners to get an easement for use of that to allow that condition to remain.
And then my other question was about the proposed garage, kind of, I guess, the machine-shitty looking thing. Is there any concern on staff's behalf in regard to the blank wall provision? Does vines, do vines suffice, or no?
We do have a condition of approval that they have, that they do add windows to that wall to break up the blank wall. And I will just note that this entire wall is blue. While it's three different materials, it is a four- or five-story massive blank wall. Just patchworked with different solid materials.
And do you know the distance that the vines are planted in from the face of the garage to the sidewalk? You know the distance that is? I mean, I'm trying to...
I have not seen a plan with vines in that area. That is something new being presented tonight. The garage is 26 feet wide, so they could narrow up the garage to provide, you know, a foot to allow vines to grow. That would alter, obviously, the design of that, but it is, as they said, a standard garage. And so that would be one. I can't tell from there, from this drawing here, I would need to look at the survey, what that dimension is. It appears up to the property line. I don't know if we have inches. I don't think we have a foot.
Okay. Are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Kronzer?
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item A, conditional use permit with the one stated condition.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve item A, the conditional use permit for height. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. Next, we have item B, side yard variance. Commissioner Kronzer?
Sure. I'd like to move approval of staff recommendation for variance B from the side yard setback from 13 feet to 0 feet.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item B, the variance for the side setback. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer, would you like to continue?
Sure. I'll move site plan review approval, and I have some modifications to the...
All right. You can go ahead and read those. I will take notes.
Hope you have a full pen and ink. Okay, first two conditions stand as is. Condition three... Condition one should be changed to the 18.
18 or 2019 would be customary.
Okay. 19. I would propose to strike condition number three. Four would stay as is. Five would be revised to state work with staff to manage stormwater coming off the garage roof. Condition six would be modified to say plant ornamental grasses, equivalent of 28 shrubs in the site as required.
Question? Can we have it say ornamental grasses or something that differentiates it from just grass? I can just get it in mode.
Staff understand what ornamental grasses are? Yes. Items, condition seven will stay as is. Condition eight, I would propose to remove thornless honey locusts and just state two additional trees. And then I would propose the remaining condition stays as is.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve item C, the site plan review, with some changes to the conditions, and I'll try to recap those. So we have a change to condition one, changing the date from 2017 to 2019. Condition three has been removed. Condition five has been modified so that the staff will, or the applicant will work with staff to manage stormwater coming off of the garage, and we're then silent on the pitch of the roof. Item six is modified to require ornamental grasses on the site, roughly in the equivalent of 28 shrubs. And then item eight is modified to remove the words thornless honey locusts and simply state two additional trees. Commissioner Kronzer, did I restate?
You did a great job.
Accurately. Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion on this motion? I should probably give the applicant an opportunity to respond. Are there any continued concerns or thoughts on that? I will say, on the trash enclosure issue, you know, whether you share trash with an adjacent building, that's fine, although I do think it's pretty clear that the code requires you can't simply have cans sitting outside. So in one way or another, any trash containers would need to be screened, but I think we addressed most of the rest of your concerns. You don't mind coming to the microphone to speak?
So thanks. I think we can live with that stuff, and I think the main thing about the screening is we don't want to be pushed into something that's, you know, not the intent of what's, you know, being asked for. So I think that we can work with staff with the screening, just like we were doing with the guttering and/or the drainage off of the garage roof. That would be great.
All right.
Bruce, is there anything else that you... No, thank you.
All right. And if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item three. Our next item for discussion is item four. Rex 26 staff is Mr. Hanauer, and I know we have at least a couple people here who wanted to speak on the item, so maybe we could have just a brief presentation. It appears that, and we, well, we received revised memo. It looks like there are some concerns or outstanding issues around the traffic circulation as well, so if you could address those, that'd be great.
No problem. Chair Brown and Commissioners, so the Rex 26 development at that southeast corner of Lyndale and 26 was approved by the planning commission in December 2016. The applicant approached staff in about February to mention some changes that they'd like to make to the project. There's a lot of similarities between this project and the previous one, but a number of the differences were not able to be approved administratively, so thus bringing it to you today. In addition to the letter from Public Works, there's two letters from, two additional letters from the public in your addendum packet. There's the project site, and just highlighting the applications that you're acting upon today. Five, five applications, sixth one was returned. CPED is supportive of all the applications with conditions, and we just see that this development would add to a commercial corridor, designated commercial corridor with more density, commercial development, and greater eyes on the street. And we did see with the variances, some unique circumstances, given the location along a commercial corridor, and also the, a little narrower lot depth for this lot compared to other lots on commercial corridors. And just showing a comparison of the applications that you had in front of you in December on the left, and those today, there's a number, there's fewer applications today, and those that are being asked for are the same request, just a little different in the numbers that are being asked for. So the FAR request has gone up from, it was 2.38 to 2.8, now it's 2.55 to 3.1. That's just an example. The setbacks were the other ones that they are getting a little closer to the property lines. But with a brief comparison of the projects, for the number of stories, that has stayed the same based upon how we calculate and analyze the first floor. They are bringing the first floor down from 23 to 20 feet. So we recognize that the number of floors is going up from four to five, but the number of stories, we saw this as the same. Also, the overall height is staying, the maximum height is staying at 62 feet. I mentioned the reduction in height of the first floor, and each of the upper floors is being reduced in height by approximately a foot. Number of units has increased, and same with the floor area. Just note some of the design changes. Reduction in height of the first floor from three feet, I mentioned that, but also recessing the upper floors, and it shows that first floor, greater projection on Lyndale, trying to help the building relate more to the neighboring commercial buildings at the other intersections, and then lighting within the soffits that would accompany the building lighting that's required by the PO district. And almost done here, but they are, I noted this in the application, but moving the elevator core to an internal portion of the site, upper is what was approved, lower is what is proposed. By moving that elevator shaft to the inside, it frees up and allows space to have windows within that portion of the building along Lyndale. And then the applicant did change their mechanical equipment from a magic pack system to an internal system, so you didn't have those grills on the outside of the building. Now, the big, one of the big things was the maneuvering through the site, and in summarizing the big just change of that, of the ingress, egress, having vehicles turn into the site and out, was that all vehicle traffic now would enter and exit on Lyndale Avenue. Previously, cars would enter on Lyndale and exit on 26, but they added a half-floor of underground parking. There's one less curb cut with this proposal. That curb cut on Lyndale has increased in length from about 20 to 29 feet, but we've, I'll get to the conditions of approval in a minute, that we're recommending. Delivery trucks, the number would stay the same, but instead of entering Lyndale and exiting to 26, they would enter from the, let me say that again, prior, it was entering on, through the alley and exiting on 20, onto Lyndale. That's delivery trucks, and now they would enter on Lyndale and exit through the alley. Did I just mess that up? I was joking. I was joking. So, thank you. Vehicle, the trucks would now enter the alley and exit onto Lyndale. Yes, no? Yeah, okay, so I will come back to that in a minute, but this same number of delivery trucks, I'll make sure you have the correct information in a second. Let me look at my notes. But, so, Public Works did have concerns with the, with the proposal of having all the vehicle traffic enter and exit on Lyndale Avenue. And one of the big things was that vehicles would try to take a left turn onto Lyndale Avenue, and that, and the poster child is the wedge. So of situations and complaints that have been taking place. But the applicant, with the conditions of approval, staff's recommending, we're looking at a real-time parking counter, so people aren't trying to enter the parking ramp and exit. We're wanting a real-time transit screen to support transit and having people take mass transit. A right-turn-only sign, that'd be well-posted, so vehicles would only, not trying to go into traffic that would cause greater delays. And then a plant, having a median that would separate the truck access and the vehicle access, so kind of reducing the size of that curb cut. The timing of this is that Public Works provided those comments. We got those comments, we've been working with them since February, but we had that official review last week, so it's a little later than we'd like to see. But the applicant will definitely have to gain approvals from the Public Works Department for this configuration to work. But what we're coming up with are the conditions that CPED is recommending. We share Public Works' concerns, but we feel that these changes and these conditions would help improve the situation. And just to note, 26th Street is, is, is recommended to have a dedicated bike lane on the north side of 26th Street. Okay. And then in reviewing the exterior building materials, the, what has stayed the same is the building would have these brick boxes closest to Lyndale Avenue, and then a kind of almost an accent material, that's the champagne vertical metal siding. But what has changed is, in the previous proposal, floors two through four had a architectural metal shingle. That was about 40% of the exterior materials on that west and east elevation. The applicant is now proposing to have a vertical metal panel that would be on floors two through four, and then a metal shingle on the upper floor. We counted the number of materials each, they had three different types of metal shingle, metal material, and we counted each of those, if, counting each of those as a separate material, we saw them having too many materials, so we recommended a condition of approval that only three materials be allowed on one elevation. That's, that's part of our guide to exterior materials. And just, you see the recommended conditions of approval. I think I tried to touch on the main ones that often went boilerplate, and saw the, in the public comments, that there's, like I mentioned, there's two letters. One is not in support of the project, the other from a neighboring business owner. Common Roots was encouraging the commission to, amongst, among a few things, was to consider additional bike parking and not having canopy trees looking at, or looking at canopy trees rather than the ornamental trees that the applicant's proposing in the public right-of-way. So with that, I'll be happy to answer questions you may have.
All right. Commissioner Lupe here, you have a question.
Aaron, were there any concerns about the, it appears to be a low wall dividing the semi-truck garage from the customer parking area? It seems as though it, when you get to the end of it, it might be kind of high enough to block some sightlines for little pedestrians and also for other vehicles.
Yeah. Commissioner Lupe here, that's a good point. And if that, with this, and there was some of the other renderings that show this in closer detail, if you felt that this would help reduce the speed that cars would try to come in, but would like a lower height, that could be something that you could definitely, definitely add as a condition of approval.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Commissioner Kronzer?
Did Public Works suggest what might be acceptable as far as vehicle access?
Commissioner Kronzer, they didn't provide, they, like us, will often react to a proposal and didn't provide specific recommendations on what would make this supported, however supportable. But in reviewing the previous proposal, the one that you had in 2016, there might have been some reservations, as noted on page two and three in the PDR report there, and you can see the previous PDR report in the report in here. But they, they would have signed off on that previous proposal by having vehicles enter Lyndale and exit onto 26th Street.
All right. Are there any further questions of staff? And Aaron, just to clarify, your recommendation is still to approve with, with all of the conditions that were originally listed. Because the applicant would have to get that sign off from Public Works anyway, we would not need to modify our conditions if we were to go with the staff recommendation.
Correct. Correct. And how about I try this third time? Trucks would enter the project site from the alley. And how about I try this third time, trucks would enter the project site from the alley and exit onto Lyndale.
Okay. And, and just to clarify, is Public Works' main concern about maneuvering trucks on either the street or the alley, or maybe?
I think the main, if I was to, the main concern would be the vehicle traffic, not the trucks, and, and how much would be coming onto Lyndale Avenue because of the amount of complaints that they do receive.
Okay. That's helpful. Commissioner Rockwell?
And, so just, just clarification on the, so we've got signs directing traffic exiting the project to only take a right turn.
Right.
But there is nothing precluding a southbound driver on Lyndale taking a left turn across traffic, right? So we're cutting our cross-traffic potentially in half, but not totally.
Two things, that was the previous proposal, that was that cars were going to enter the site from, from, selfbound could enter by taking a left.
Right.
And the other part is that there is discussions on there being a median along Lyndale Avenue to prevent such turns into these lots.
So that's part of the discussion with Public Works?
Right, but that's, that's long-term, and that, that may not happen for, for a while, and that's not a guarantee.
Sure. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any further questions of staff? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and please state your name and address for the record, and perhaps you could just address your rationale for having the traffic circulation the way you're proposing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Kelly Dorn, I'm here on behalf of the developer, Rex 26. And, yeah, we're generally fine with all of the conditions that are, have been attached to the plan. Just one clarification on, on item, condition number six, it's the second part of that, we're just to clarify that we'll be happy to put a mural on the backside of that corner of the building, as it's, as it's called out here, rather than, there's an option there, we'll just pick the mural, just so we're clear on that. And then on the traffic issue, this was really the precipitation when we got involved in the project, and we started to look at the functioning aspects of how this worked, we were concerned that what was previously designed didn't work. And if I can show this, will that come up? This was the old site plan, and what you have here is, this is the alley back here, traffic was, the trucks were supposed to turn in off of Lyndale and come through a 12-foot-wide opening into the, into a garage area. And that assumes that a truck driver can make it through that needle, it's like threading a needle every time you drive a truck into that space. Then they were supposed to come through the truck area and maneuver back into a loading dock, which would have likely required them to come over the alley in order to make that transition and back properly into the loading dock. What that also, in this current, in this former design, it also had all of the trash and other areas for the building, including the residential building on the opposite side of the truck. So everything had to come across to get to the trash room if you had cardboard or other things. So we were, we were creating a safety factor in our mind with truck, with people migrating across the truck area to bring things that don't go down a trash chute into that trash area. And then on this plan, the entrance to the old lower garage was here on 20, on Lyndale, excuse me, and as Aaron said a moment ago, the exit was out on 26th. We reviewed that with our traffic consultants, and they universally said this is an unsafe condition, to have an exit bound here on 26th, co-mingling with a curb cut both directions for an alley. And they said that that, they would not recommend that from a safety standpoint as well. And so then, we modified that to, to the current plan, which provides for the reverse of the truck flow, as Aaron mentioned, for the trucks to turn off of 26th, come down the alley, and turn into the loading dock. And we, because of that, we were able to create a 20-foot-wide opening, and so the truck movement into the loading dock is quite safer. Furthermore, there's an elevational difficulty here. This alley here at the end of the building is almost five feet higher than the alley, than the street elevation. And so we're working actually counterproductive to how a truck would work or unload. And so by doing it this way, we also, underneath this, we back the foundation up, so all of this area at the end of the building is now a slab on grade, and so it supports a truck properly without all the structural aspects that would go into a building. And we were able thus to get the trash and all the other things to work functionally into the building, as well as move the elevators, as Aaron mentioned. So how this came about is that was really our discussion to start this dialogue, and when we met with city staff, and ultimately with Councilmember Bender, they were supportive of that change, and actually, if we had left it at that, we would have been able to do that on an administrative approval. But as we further met with them, they indicated that there were other concerns about the project, such as the height of the first floor, and some of the elevations along Lyndale. And so we decided that we would take this opportunity to reinvent other parts of the building as well. And so that's why we came back before you today, in, in good faith, to try to address some of the other concerns that were lingering from the previous approval. So the traffic flow was always such that the trucks were going to enter from Lyndale originally, as would any vehicles enter from Lyndale, to your question, Commissioner Rockwell, and then depart on, on, both of them departed on 26th. The other aspect of that, that we felt was problematic, well, hopefully you can read this, this lower part here is the original plan, and so as that truck came in and it faced towards the alley, this is not necessarily representative of the size of the potential truck that could be sitting in here. That truck is running, and that running cab is in close proximity to our neighbors across the alley, and we felt that was problematic and could be subject to other complaints. Plus, you can see the slope of this truck, in order to, because of the grade change, in order for the truck to function here, this truck has to sit at an angle up against a loading dock. Well, that's a completely unsafe condition, and was objected to by our, by our retailers about how to unload safely a semi, or a trailer, trying to unload things with a pallet jack or, or a wheelie or other things to do that. And so by reversing the traffic flow on the truck side, because of the grade change, we're able to bring the truck in, and we're able to back it up into a loading dock and have a flat condition. And also, the cab now is facing towards the middle of the building and not at the edge of the building. Lastly, this, this configuration down here also contemplated a completely open truck area, which was subject to all of our Minnesota winters. So this truck would have to exit coming up a ramp from a standing start and climbing three to five feet in order to get out of this, and we felt that was an unsafe condition too, with, with potential for ice or snow buildup as it goes in there. So we felt that this was a much safer condition, and we were able to make that modification. And but while we were doing that, we decided it was best to try to address these other concerns as well. And that is also consistent with your own zoning code. This site is guided for mixed, mixed use, its future guidance misuse. Your, your zoning code requires in a mixed use that truck traffic be, not use the public right-of-way in order to maneuver, so we've been able to now accomplish that where we felt before that was subject to debate. Furthermore, the zoning code in section 541, I'll throw it up here, if you can read it, in 541, it says, "The consolidation of curb cuts shall be encouraged, and new curb cuts should be discouraged whenever appropriate, considering safe traffic flow, the objectives of this ordinance and access points needed for the proper and functioning of your use." So we just felt that the consolidation of these curb cuts on, on Lyndale, which is 200, and those curb cuts are 275 feet from the intersection, versus the exit, formerly approved exit from the site onto 26th is 100 feet from the intersection. So we felt this was a much safer condition, we are totally fine with the right-out-only language, and we would instruct our tenants to make certain that their truck drivers comply with that, we think that's right, and we're totally aware that there could be a future median down the middle as well, and we're fine with that if that happens. In fact, we would encourage that to happen sooner versus later in order to facilitate this stuff. So we think this is a much safer thing. We think what this really boils down to is, some of this information got to Public Works late, they really haven't had an opportunity to vet this and look at this thoroughly. We feel that if we meet with them, and along with our traffic experts, we'll be able to convince them of the merits of these changes, and, and therefore, we're accepting all the conditions that I put, and put up with a clarification on the mural, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Kronzer?
Kelly, can you go to the, a plan that shows the auto-exit location? There seems to-
This, this plan back here.
Yeah, there's the, the proposal.
The, the new one or the old?
The new one.
Okay.
Something that shows some of the more line work, where the exiting car has to neck down to meet the curb cut.
Oh, yeah, do I have that? Do I have that?
And while you're getting that, my global question is, it seems like we're at an impasse with Public Works, and until we have resolution, it's really hard for us to do much here. So I'm not-
Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
So at the auto, the auto-exit, it seems like the exiting auto is forced into the oncoming, entering auto into the garage. You'll find it. My larger question is, are you aware of the specific concerns Public Works has, and a resolution to those concerns?
Well, I'm aware that they're looking at this differently than they, than they looked at the first one, and I'm aware that they had concerns over the first one.
Yeah.
And we think that we have strong arguments that this is a better scenario all the way around, and they just haven't, in my opinion, haven't looked at it thoroughly enough to come to the right conclusion. And so we think that's more of a factor here than, 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 than anything else, so.
Have you met with Public Works personally?
No, we were unaware that they had delivered, we were unaware that the information was delivered to them later than normal in the process, and we were awaiting the opportunity to meet with them, and we were actually the ones that helped orchestrate the information getting to them, and there was not time prior to this to have that meeting, Commissioner Kronzer. But we, but we both plan on having that.
All right.
So, C2 is a good example?
C2.2.
C2.0?
Oh, that's two in front of that.
And maybe I'm reading and drawing wrong, it looks like, put yourself-
Is this what you're referring to, Commissioner Kronzer, this diagram?
Yes, put yourself in an exiting auto, and there is a series of parallel lines at angles, looks to be like a curb, and it's pushing the exiting car into, you know, towards the curb cut.
These angles right here?
Nope, 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 nope. Your exit, put yourself as an exiting car.
Yeah.
And what do you, you're forced to turn left slightly. What is that element there?
You're an exiting car coming out through here?
Yep, and boom, you hit something.
And right in here?
Yep.
That's just this narrowing of the sidewalk and the curb at the street.
So the car is forced to-
The car was forced to, based on trying to comply with your curb, okay?
Yeah.
The car is forced to go left before it goes right, that's correct.
Okay.
And that's your requirement. We don't, in order to narrow the opening.
Well, yes. Can you talk a little bit more about the metal panels, and what, what actually is the proposal?
We're in agreement with staff that will consolidate the metal panels.
But I, I'm more specific, more specific what the actual vertical panel is, and what the shingle is that you're proposing?
Ben, you want to address that?
Well, we're looking at two options, one is a corrugated metal panel, I'm sorry, I'm Patrick McNabham with Dorn Architects, one of the, part of the design team here. So our two metal panel options that we had on here were corrugated metal panel from two to three, or I'm sorry, two to four, with the, the metal sheik style on level five. So right now, we're looking at consolidating to one of those two options, so both of them are a hunched panel that'll have some kind of insulation behind them or within the wall.
So you're looking at shingle or corrugated?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, are there any further-
I do, I do have another question, since we're all here, and hopefully, maybe here again in a few weeks. Can you talk about your foundation system and how that's installed?
It's a driven steel foundation on three of the sides, a normal spread footing foundation on the south sand, because that's now basically a single-story element, and the, the internal workings will be a precast system.
And that's a pile-driven steel?
Pile-driven steel.
What are your plans?
Structural steel, pardon me.
What are your plans for pre-conduction surveys of neighboring properties?
We'll monitor all of that, and we'll have sound and vibration monitors throughout the construction.
Will you do pre-conduction surveys as well?
Yes.
Okay. Will you share that, those results with the city if, if we should ask for them?
Be happy to, yeah.
Thank you. Real quick on the trees in the right-of-way, why ornamental versus canopy?
I, they, take your pick.
I-
Yeah, it's just a matter, it's, some people like red, some people like blue, we're, we're not going to fight over whether it's an ornamental or a canopy. And on the, on the bicycle parking, we're actually, I think, almost double the required bicycle parking now, as it sits. I think the exterior is required to be 11, we're at 20, and I think the interior is, is, is required to be 43, and we're at 86. So I think we've doubled the required amount of bicycle parking throughout the project.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any further questions of the applicant? Hearing none, we can move on to some other speakers, and I know we have at least a couple of people here, so you can decide who wants to go first and come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Anyone like to speak on this item?
Good afternoon, my name is Bobby Dahl, I am a co-owner of 2624 Lyndale Avenue South, which is directly across the street from where this apartment complex will be built. I have a few concerns about the bike, entering the facility with the trucks. There's supposedly going to be a bike lane proposed on 26th Avenue. So as far as this drawing shows, it shows the draw, how the trucks will have to veer out from the inside lane into the outside lane, my concern is that they're going to be veering into bike lanes. And my, also, the other concern I have is that there's a certain amount of radius that you have to have for a truck to go around. I'm not sure exactly what that is, but that is one of my other concerns. The other thing was the flow of this, I, I understand what he, what he was talking about, the trucks coming in, and how going through, he said it was an eight-foot tunnel, as opposed to now a 20-foot, but before, when the traffic, the trucks would come in, they'd come in to Lyndale, and you'd end up getting this kind of nice little loop that was happening, which means less wear and tear on the roads. Now what happens is, the traffic, the trucks will be coming in from 26th, how do they get there? Are they going to be coming down Lyndale, going all the way to 28th, coming down 28th, then going, they can only go on Harriet because it's a one-way, that's also kind of a residential? Are they going to be going down Lyndale, going up Franklin, and then getting on the one-way, which is really more residential, then turning on 26th? The whole thing about the trucks is, the more trucks that you have, the more wear and tear you have on your streets. I understand that at this point, this is going to be an Aldi. I have no idea if that will stay or not, it might change to something else, which brings up another point of the setbacks that they have. They wanted, my understanding is they wanted to make the setbacks less to the street. So if you do that, I'll give you an example, we live across from French Meadow. French Meadow has their sidewalk café, a place to walk, and then they have those large decorative things where they put plants and stuff. The area to walk is about large enough for one person, it's difficult with a wheelchair. So if you put that type of setback in, if, if Aldi doesn't exist there anymore, it turns into a restaurant or a coffee shop, we need a coffee shop, there's a coffee shop in every corner, we don't have one there, so we need one. So when you have, you know, you put the streets on there, the café seating, there won't be enough room for people to walk around.
I, I will mention that, front yard setback variance was, was withdrawn, so that's, that's no, it was noticed, but it's no longer part of the-
Okay, all right. So those are, my concern is how the traffic is going to move around, and how it applies to the streets and taxpayers paying money and going on. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Sally Garbeck, and I am another owner of 2624 Lyndale Avenue, and I believe some of my concerns were mentioned. One of them is what will happen to our aging water, sewer, and gas lines along Lyndale Avenue, and will this construction cause, if it causes anything to break, who's going to have to pay for the repairs? Is master properties going to pay anything at all, and if they are- And if they are, will it be held in escrow until the construction is done so that there is money there in case it's needed? Another one is when they destroy the four buildings that are currently there, do we in the neighborhood have to worry about asbestos and flood contamination from the deconstruction? There's no mention at all that they should be utilizing something like solar energy. It would be nice if new construction did use that so that we would be less using of oil. And they don't want to put a canopy tree or forest shrubs, which are recommended for the site based on the size of the site. And I wonder why, if they, they want to have the building all the way up to three feet away from the, the house that is going to be on the south side. If that three feet is 13 feet, they could put in a couple of trees. They could put in more than a couple of shrubs. They could keep our whole area cooler. All you need to do is lose one big tree, and it, and the temperature rises 10 to 20 degrees. Just one canopy tree. Our forestry department is asking people to plant trees in their yards. And then we are telling the people with money who are putting in construction that they don't have to. And I think that that is like totally wrong. And now I'm getting obsessive. I have, I, I really do think we need more trees. I believe your forestry department is correct. And also, I have a little funny thing about the drawings that, that these people have been showing us. And in one of them, which shows the proposed building from the 26th Avenue side, our building, which is a two-story building on the opposite side of Lindale, looks like it is nearly as tall as a six-foot, five, five-to-six-story building will be. I don't think that's true. A, one family home across the alley, which is probably two-story, maybe three if there's something in the attic, looks like it is as tall as four stories of that building. And I'm just wondering if they're used a special scale for their building and a different scale for everything around so that it looks like it will not affect the neighborhood? Because there will be shadow effect. Even if it's setback, there's going to be shadow effect. And right now, seasonally, I can go on the front porch in my building and see the skyline. I will not be able to do that once five-to-six stories are put in. That is a view. I'm, let's see, how did you guys put it? You guys said that that would be a significant open space and that it is not considered to be blocked. But I mean, you weren't looking at the skyline. You were looking at water, you were looking at old buildings and significant green space. And we could have a little bit of significant green space with that 13 feet. And I might be able to see a little bit of the skyline if it's only the four stories instead of the five or six. There's also no indication that any of these rental units are going to be used to help people who cannot afford a lot of the apartments in our area. Are you going to make them put in at least 10 to 20% of the units to help get rid of homelessness? So that people can afford to live somewhere? Because a lot of people who are homeless are working two or three jobs. They're not just loafers, they're not just drunks out on the street. They need places to, that they can afford to live in. And I didn't see any indication of that either in the plan. And I, maybe I just didn't read the right portion of it. I think that's basically it. Thank you for your consideration, and the good work that you do.
Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Anyone else? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Jerry Garbeck, I live at 2624 Lindale. In the discussions on the traffic, nobody has talked about the fact that exactly across Lindale from where the new entrances will be, you have the French Meadow parking lot, which currently causes backup today as people are coming from the south, heading north, and trying to turn into the parking lot. So how is this going to work if you're going to have them trying to get into French Meadow and people exiting or else trying to get into the Rex 26? So that is a concern that I haven't heard anyone talk about. Again, traffic and having the trucks coming in on 26th is an issue, I think. Just from where are they coming from? So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, one more speaker. Please state your name and address.
Great, my name is Paul Loxo, and I own Unit 112 in 2610 Garfield Avenue. And I'm right in the shadow of the expanding building. So I just wanted to take a second to voice my disapproval of the setback coming closer to the unit there. And that's about it. Thanks.
All right, thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we have several applications before us, six to be exact. Would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Or are there any further questions of staff? Commissioner Gagnon?
Thank you. So. Sorry. The, being someone that drives down that part of Lindale daily, sometimes several times, currently, most of the day, the traffic, because of that left one-way street, 26th, in the left lane, is backed up almost all the way to Lake Street. And so you have to go around. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what Public Works, like, how will, what will working with Public Works, how will that resolve the fact that that's going to be with French Meadow there, with the one-way at Common Roots? With that being a major left turn until you get to the highway or until you get to Franklin? How will they resolve that? I mean, we say, okay, go work with Public Works and come back, or not come back, just. I'm, I'd really like to understand how they're going to resolve it, because it really is bad, very, very bad right now. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around what that will look like.
Yeah, I might ask staff to clarify a little bit. What, what would be the process from here? If Public Works has some recommendations that alter things, would it likely come back?
Commissioners, we honestly don't know what the solutions might be that, that Public Works will suggest, but certainly the, the most basic thing will be right-in route, right-out only, and how that would be potentially enforced. It could be that Public Works recommends going, reverting back to the previous circulation pattern so that vehicles can, can go out to 26th and circulate up or down Lindale by entering from 26th. Clearly, we need to make sure that, we have to allow the applicant reasonable access to their property, one way or another. And it's not a good situation out there right now, as you pointed out. And we want to make sure it doesn't get substantially worse. Mr. Hanauer mentioned the situation at the Wedge Co-op, which does cause some traffic concerns. And, but my understanding is that part of that does stem from the number of people that are, as Mr. Rockwell alluded to, heading southbound and trying to turn left into, into the parking lot. So I think that is probably the biggest concern that Public Works will try to address.
Okay, so there would be no left turn into their unit? You would have to come, do a right turn, or only a right turn out?
I think that is probably the most basic level of.
And we can enforce that.
Advice, but how that's, how that's enforced, of course, is.
Okay, because there's no light, left turn light at 26th either, it's just a green light. So that's part of the problem? Is there any potential, even if you don't put a left turn lane, for a left turn light? Is that something that we can do? I mean, is this stuff that we do for a private, when a, when a building is built for the city? We just, we change all this?
If I understood your question, Commissioner Gagnon, it's not likely that we're going to create a segment of 26th Street that has a reverse-flow traffic lane going.
No, from Lindale, a left turn lane at Lindale and 26th.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, because there's not one, it's just a green light.
Right, right.
So you have to wait.
I would think that would be in the realm of possibility. There, of course, is discussion of reconstructing Lindale, as Mr. Hanauer referred to, which could include some kind of median. But I don't know how many years off in the horizon that might be.
Commissioner Magrino?
I remember bringing this up when we talked about this last year. And I, I don't know that we can necessarily consider exactly that it is an Aldi when we're talking about approving the site plan here. But I think we're all familiar with the Wedge parking lot. I went to the Wedge a couple of days ago, and it's not a great situation on Lindale with people turning in and out of that onto Lindale. But the Wedge is really like a regional destination. And I anticipate this particular Aldi at 26th and Lindale is going to have a lot less car traffic coming to it. I mean, if you are really committed to driving to Aldi, they're certainly easier Aldis to get to. If you're driving a car, I imagine this is going to be a lot of walk-up business from Lower Hill East and Whittier. And if it does become that much of a chore to drive your car four blocks, you might either walk or just drive to another Aldi. And so, I, I mean, it seemed like a lot of the concern that Public Works had was the, the car access rather than the truck access. I think that, that was kind of what Mr. Hanauer was getting at. And then I guess I, I did kind of have a question for staff. When we're thinking about the Wedge, you know, they often have a cop out there directing traffic. Is that something they just do out of the goodness of their heart? Or did we, did someone make them do that? Is that something we could condition potentially for this site if it's needed?
Commissioner Magrino, I'm, I'm not aware if, if that is, what, what the situation is with the Wedge, if that's on their own accord that they did that? Or if, I'm, I'm assuming that is the case. And that with this, I'm, I just, if Mr. Wittenberg has thoughts on the potential of adding that as a condition of approval, I'm, I'm not sure. But I think that might go beyond the realms of the, the land use review that we have. And it'd be working with Public Works once again to come up with the best solution. And perhaps that does involve that, but I'm not sure. Commissioners, I don't know that I have anything else to add to what Mr. Hanauer said. If you go down that path, maybe it's more of a suggestion that Public Works consider implementing that rather than a mandate. But if the, if it comes down to, that's really an only, mitigating circumstance that would make this the only way that would be acceptable. And certainly that, which could be something you would consider requiring.
Because I know the city does require, not exactly require, but they'll put conditions on a business license that you have to have, off-duty police officers, not necessarily for traffic reasons, but for others. And so I don't think that would be entirely outside of our, our scope. But it is a land use application, which is a little bit different. So just some thoughts about it.
Commissioner Slack and then Commissioner Vreeland?
Yeah, I think this is more of a comment for staff than a question specifically in your ongoing conversations with Public Works. You know, I think that you need to really think about the interface of where the automobiles that are exiting sort of interact with the public realm, because it's with, I think with the grade there and the fact that the public realm is, is fairly wide, that there's sort of a gray area. You know, cars probably are going to pull further out, they're probably going to pull over the sidewalk to kind of get a view, to hopefully just turn right, not turn left. But, so there might be some things that Public Works might want to think about as it relates to sort of that transition. So whether it's increased scoring on the, on the sidewalk part, the pedestrian round part, or, not that I want to add any visual or noise clutter, but, you know, auditory or signs that kind of announce that, you know, there's a car pulling out might be, might be useful in that situation.
Right, Commissioner Vreeland?
Yes, I was concerned with my colleague's concern F9 about the chunk of thing between trucks and cars. And since it's our insistence that that be there, I would hope to empower staff to design something that is not going to endanger small children or wagons or whatever couldn't be seen. So either transparent or lower or just, and it, you're perfectly capable of negotiating that without us changing number nine. So I just wanted to make sure that that was mentioned.
Commissioner Cronzer?
Yeah, I was just reading the PDR report on traffic, and it says, "The original TDMP shall be revised to match the current proposal." So it sounds like that's one very specific thing Public Works is asking for. Aaron, any idea how long it would take to revise the TDMP?
Two weeks?
Couple of weeks?
So, Aaron, your estimation, would this issue be resolved within two weeks, one more cycle?
The next meeting, I think, is July 11th, which, yeah, it's, the applicant, I think, if I understood them correctly, it would be, they, they can work on that, and they'll, they'll try to get it done within the next two or three weeks. And that may be enough time to prioritize the next cycle.
Commissioner Rockwell?
What, just bouncing off Commissioner Cronzer's question. What's the consequence if we approve and Public Works says this is not workable? Then the developer goes back and works this out, right? So.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. A couple of different scenarios. If, if the planning commission does approve it, but the applicant and, and Public Works aren't, and CPED aren't able to come to an agreement, then, then they do have their approvals from the previous plans that if, if that's something that could work, they, they could go ahead with that plan. And then we would have to make a judgment call in terms of whether, if there was something that was considered still a major alteration, then it, it could come back to this commission in terms of design, that, that change, design changes that happen because of that, because of going back to the original proposal.
Commissioner Cronzer?
Yeah, you know, I hate to do this, and I'm sensitive to timing of development, but I think we need to continue this one cycle. So like, make a motion to continue this project one cycle?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue items A through F, one cycle to the meeting of July 17th. And I might just confirm with staff, is that still within the 60-day review period? We're not running into any issues there?
Chair Brown, it, it would be, I think the, and the appeal period would be beyond that, but we do have the opportunities to extend it another 60 days beyond that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to continue item four to the July 17th meeting. Is there any further discussion? I might just add, I, I think, you know, and I, I hope the applicant understands as well. I think particularly since there is a lot of interest in, in traffic issues associated with this project, it would be good, before we do make a final decision, to just kind of have that finality from Public Works as well, that we aren't going to see substantial changes. And I think gives everyone a little bit higher of a comfort level with it. So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lippipier?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
No.
Slack?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
So that's six to one.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion, at least for today, on item four. Our next item for discussion is item five, Hiawatha Collegiate High School, and staff is Ms. Devorek.
is Ms. Dvorak. I know there are a few people here, and we got some comments by email as well, so maybe you want to get some of the highlights of this project.
So this is the Hiawatha Collegiate High School project at 3530 East 28th Street. There are a number of applications before you this evening, conditional use from it to allow the public, or the school, excuse me, it is a high school, a conditional use from it to increase the height of the four light poles surrounding the soccer field up to 60 feet, a variance of the maximum fence height in that required corner side yard and north interior side yard from six to 20 feet, and that is for the fence that goes in back of the soccer goals. I've highlighted on the site plan where those fences are located, or the netting system, if you will. There's a variance of the corner side yard for an athletic field from 12 feet down to two feet, and that is along East 28th Street. That is for the goal itself and then also for that net. A variance of the north interior side yard from nine feet down to zero, and again, that's for the goal, and then also for that net. A variance reduced the rear yard setback, and that is along this east, excuse me, the west property line, from nine feet down to seven, and that is for the scoreboard, also highlighted. And then site planner review to allow the partial demolition of the existing building and approximately 74,000 square foot addition. Staff is recommending approval of all applications before you tonight, subject to conditions of approval, specifically in relation to the fence and the goals. We are recommending that those elements of the athletic field be removed when there is not soccer in season, and so, at least for sure during the winter months. But also, also keeping in mind that they are in conversations with the park board to use this for park board-related activities, so there may be, you know, schools aren't session in the summer, but maybe the soccer field would be used. So in the future, it could be more than just the school, but when it's not in, when we are asking that it be taken down when not in use. For the site plan review, there are some items that need alternative compliance. One is the building placement along 28th Street. We are recommending approval of that. They have some blank walls and some window issues on the north elevation. They do have fire-rated walls, so they cannot have openings, so we are recommending that you grant alternative compliance for those. They need alternative compliance for the number of trees on the site. They do meet the number of trees when you combine the number of evergreen trees and the number of canopy trees, so we are recommending alternative compliance for that. The evergreen trees does provide seasonal interest when all of the canopy trees would drop their leaves, so we feel that that is a good trade-off. For the shrubs, we are adding the condition of approval, similar to the last item that I presented before you tonight. They are proposing a number of perennials, including ornamental grasses. In addition to those ornamental grasses, we are recommending that they meet half of the shrub requirements, so 146 shrubs, so that is an added condition of approval to the site planner review. And then we are granting alternative compliance for the parking lot screening on the north property line. The Midtown Greenway is adjacent to the site. It is higher than, and so screening would not screen it from the trails, given the elevation change from the Midtown Greenway down to where the parking lot would sit. So those are the conditions of approval and the applications, and I can walk through any items at the site or the elevations if you would like me to, or I can conclude and stand for questions.
All right, I think we can see if, we can see if the commission has any questions. Commissioner Gagnon?
Is there a condition that the lights have to be off by a certain time?
We do not have that as a condition of approval.
Okay, so we've had to do that for other, for Minneapolis Public Schools, like 10:00 at night, and it's a firm stop.
Okay.
And I think that's, other soccer fields in the city that have not done that, people are playing till 11:00 midnight. I mean, it really goes late. And just respectfully, the Greenway, but also there's homes right there. You have to have a hard stop, or it will not happen. We have to end games, I don't care if it's double overtime, we have to stop and turn the lights out. So I'm just cognizant of that. We had a two-year conversation with the Southwest High School Soccer, our lights that went up on the field, and it's made a really, it's made a positive difference. Otherwise, I'm telling you, we would not have turned them off at 10, because games go on and on. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Vreeland?
Yes, so there's been several letters and a number of questions asked. Two of the questions that I would ask you about would be the cell tower and the well and what, what control or impact the commission has on those issues.
The cell tower is existing and is not being removed or moved as part of this application, and so there is nothing that we can do as part of this application to alter that. As far as the well is concerned, we did, I did talk with environmental health. There are a number of things that need to be investigated to determine whether or not the well water can be used. The applicants are here and can speak to it. The environmental health department for the city and the state would get involved in those investigations, and pending the outcome of that would determine whether or not the water could be used. It's my understanding that the applicant would be using the well water if it is usable for irrigation purposes on the site.
Thank you.
All right, so are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. If you could come to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record.
Not you.
Let us know if there's anything you'd like to add to the staff presentation or any other issues you'd like to address.
Absolutely. Members of the planning commission, President Brown, community members as well, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name's Sean Elder. I'm the chief operating officer with Hiawatha Academies. I understand tonight's hearing is about the specifics of our land use application, but I did want to take a little bit of time to talk about Hiawatha and the school that would be going into the site. For those of you that don't know us, we are a network of public open enrollment charter schools in South Minneapolis dedicated to closing the opportunity gap that exists. We serve a population of students that, 90% of whom qualified for free and reduced lunch, 98% of whom are students of color, and 85% of our students are Latino, and many of whom receive English language learner services as well. We were founded in 2007. Our schools have consistently been named as reward and celebration schools, the two top rankings offered by the Minnesota Department of Education. We currently have 1,250 students in our schools, grades K through 10, in four schools in South Minneapolis. And we have a strategic plan to grow to fifth schools and five schools, and this would be our fifth campus in Minneapolis. Our mission is to empower every single one of our scholars with the knowledge, character, and leadership skills to graduate from college and serve the common good. We make a solemn promise to every child that walks through our doors and to every parent that supports those students, and that we, as Hiawatha Academies, will do everything that we can in our power to help them on that path to through college. On this score, we've, and in our, entering into our 11th year, we've had early success. Our schools frequently are listed on the Star Tribune's Beating the Odds list. Frequently, our scholars outperform national growth standards across the country, and we're proud of those opportunities and we celebrate them. But we do know that our work is beyond just academic test scores and is not just what brings us to our work. We believe in the infinite dignity of all of our students and the infinite dignity of all children in our city. We understand that we're faced with an unfortunate reality today in our city, where a child's zip code and their race and ethnicity is still largely predictive of educational opportunities that we as a society offer them. The data is irrefutable. Our achievement gaps in readiness for K, third grade reading, high school graduation rates for Latinos, African-American students are some of the worst in the country. And it doesn't have to be this way. And so we dedicate our work to this and to supporting students and families on a path where we know that 70% of Minneapolis jobs will require a higher education degree in a short amount of time. And we believe that commissions and forums like this are an opportunity for us in our work to affect that change. The way we get there, a few components of our program includes high expectations for all of our scholars that enter our schools. Our principals act as instructional leaders. Our directors of operation at each one of our campuses serve as community liaisons and facility managers that support our neighborhood engagement. We regularly use data to inform our instruction and to support our students in an individualized way, and we also spend more time in our schools. We have a longer school day in school a year, roughly about 25% more time than schools in our area. Because we are a school with more time and we're able to teach the whole child, our elementary, middle school, and high school, students deserve and receive a breadth of programming, including music, art, gym, technology, foreign language, movement, as well as extracurriculars and co-curriculars such as sports, band, clubs, and the like. And we seek that our facilities and our buildings match those programming needs that we know are essential to developing life skills to put students on a path to college. That's a brief overview of who we are. I know that there are likely questions about the specifics of our, of our project, but I do want to speak to our mission and our students and our scholars. We, you know, scholars like Kyla Bobo, whose mother is here to speak tonight, and the work that Cynthia does with her, and Kyla is one of our high school students that is, will be fortunate to attend Hiawatha Collegiate High School at the site should be approved. For Kyla, the opportunity, the question isn't whether she'll go to college, but which college she'll go to. It won't be whether she'll have a job, but whether she'll be prepared to navigate a job for the future, such as the design for our program is seeking. So Cynthia will speak to that specifically a little later on. Our schools will open, our high school will open in the fall of 2018. It is our desire to continue to root ourselves in our local neighborhoods and our communities, just as we've done in the Morris Park community, in the Northrop community, in the Kingfield community, and we take great pride and great focus in our partnership and outreach to community members, which is why we're asking the board and the commission to vote yes on the land use application. The timing of this approval is critical. We are a school that has a definite school year start date, and our ability to break ground on the site will ensure that our high school opens and opens on time for our students, as well as that we receive the city permits needed for the financing that is in place that has certain time limits on that financing as well. As I mentioned, we've rooted ourselves in communities since January. We've engaged with the Longfellow Community Council, the Seward Community Group, Midtown Greenway Coalition, Seward Redesign, and we're fortunate and grateful for the letters of support that have been sent in on this project. And during those meetings, we've made a number of adaptations to our site to manage storm water. There is a lot of interest about the field and the opportunity to reduce impervious service area on the site and to increase green, green amenity, and then, excuse me, amenities along the Greenway. And I understand that we may have community concerns that are expressed tonight, and we welcome those. We take approach of active engagement, transparent communication, accessible listening and adaptation when and if possible that we can do that. I hope the neighbors and that speak tonight see that even in the last week, we've been trying to be as responsive as possible when we can. We also commit to that while our schools are in operation, because we know that there may be blind spots and relationships that are ongoing. And as I mentioned, our organizational design is designed in a way that has a specific person to accommodate those concerns. Just as an example, in the last week, we've talked about our busing strategy. All of our students take metro transit buses to our campus, so we do not use yellow buses. We understand there's a school nearby, but the traffic management is an important conversation with our neighborhood, and our metro transit buses will accommodate that. We've, have a desire to adapt our landscaping needs. We even found a way to keep a large tree on the site just recently with some grading changes that was expressed at a community meeting, and are open to adaptations as needed, though we do offer quite a bit more landscaping than I know the code requires, that they were in the 60% compared to the 20% requirement. So in closing, this building would really meet the educational hopes and dreams of an additional 788 scholars in our network of schools and provide a pathway for all of our elementary, middle school, and high school students on that path to and through college. We can really only change this educational landscape that exists in our city and in our state with partnership with the city, with like-minded individuals, with community-based organizations, and our local neighbors, and we don't do this alone. So we're grateful for the recommendations from CPED staff and the community organizations that have supported us. Give me ask for your support, and thank you for your time. I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, are there any questions for the applicants? Hearing none, we can move on to some other speakers. I know there are a few people here at least who'd like to speak on this, so you can decide who goes first. And yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. We do for the record.
My name is Cynthia Bobo. My address is 4629 Second Avenue South. My daughter, Kyla, is 15 years old. She will be, when school starts again, she will be a junior, and she doesn't, she won't be 16 until the end of September. This school is an amazing school. I could go on for the rest of the night to talk about the school. Kyla has been at the school since the day the doors opened in 2007, so she will be part of the first graduating class of Hiawatha Leadership Academy, the whole school. The education is stellar. She already knows where she wants to go to college, although she changes it, like teenagers do. She is a student, AB student, and she also, with the help of the school, they do practice ACTs, and she is at a 22. And 2530 is guaranteed scholarships that will be flooding for her. And without this school, I don't think that this would have happened. She is the last of five children. She will be my first child to go to a university, and that is a big achievement in itself. And not only is my daughter there, I have four grandchildren there, five. I forgot about five. But anyway, she's in kindergarten, she just started. So I have five grandchildren there, grandchildren there, and I have been part of everything that goes on in the school, and that is phenomenal, because a lot of schools, you can not only, you can't even go to the school without an appointment. There's an open-door policy. My other three older children were educated in Chicago, Illinois, and I don't have anything good to say about that. But Minnesota and this school, even my, my youngest son, JoJo, he's 24, he still struggled through school, but Kyla has not had one hiccup in her education. The only hiccup we had in the beginning was they didn't know if they were going to open a high school, and I was definitely up there with a banner, "We're going to open this school. I want my baby to go to this school," because when you came and recruited me, you said from kindergarten through high school. And then on top of that, they have an advisor that follows them through college. So I can't, like I say, I could talk all night long about this school and the field. The kids are so excited, I'm so excited for them to have an athletic field, because right now, they're in the junior high building, and they have a little playground in the background and everything, but this field will open up so many opportunities for our children. I just think it's phenomenal. I just think it's phenomenal, and I think all the little things can definitely be worked out. There's no reason why they can't. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate you guys. Have a good night.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker. You can decide who would like to go next, and please state your name and address for the record.
Anne Thompson, 2905 34th Avenue South. Thanks for your time and attention. I've got, I wrote you the big voluminous letter, and I think you have it, because thanks to Lisa. I'm assuming that's Lisa over there who gets Clark, not Lisa. Hi, Lisa. I've got seven points, and I'll try to get through them really quickly. I think there's a couple of other neighbors who want to speak, but if I speak too quickly or if you don't understand my accent, please feel free to tell me to slow down, and I don't want that to delay how concerned I am about approving this proposal tonight. So what I'm requesting is that you can, in consideration of the concerns that myself and my neighbors are about to put forward, that you delay approval of this proposal tonight until we can have ongoing conversations with Shaun and the school to make sure that we have a level of confidence that they will be addressed. We don't have that level of confidence at this moment. Okay, so number one, you have three letters of support. I just wanted to mention that. I'm going to summarize everything in that letter real quick here. LCC, Longfellow Community Council, I went to their board meeting, I think it was on the 15th, and it was a five to four vote that they would approve that draft letter supporting this proposal that you have tonight, and I was the only one speaking, you know, about that, and I can certainly share my concerns, but they don't represent the neighbors in the immediately impacted area, which I would say is 32nd, 33rd, 34th, 35th, and 36th avenues, especially the 2800 block. The second letter you'll have is from Seward Redesign. I also communicated with Brian Miller, their executive director. I'm curious about that, and my curiosity there is around the land use and pre-development study that was approved as guidelines in 2007 that I'm presuming that you guys are all very familiar with. So when I looked at the proposed Hiawatha Academy, it really is kind of ambiguous why a school should be there when it's meant to be residential. After talking with Brian, I understand why it's a school. I think it's awesome what you guys do in terms of your mission. No one's disputing the mission, or that that school does fantastic work, or that it should be there. It's really the process, the proposal, and certain parts of that design that we want to talk to. But I would like, I'd be curious to hear from you, how that so many parts of this proposal kind of are in conflict, that's probably too strong of a word, with the land use pre-development study. In the land use pre-development study, 34th Avenue exits, it's where all the bikes exit, it's kind of the Bracket Park exit for cyclists. I'm a cyclist myself off the Greenway. You come straight down past that ugly, ugly Shasta Building site, it's awesome that it's going to be remediated, onto 34th Avenue. In the land use and pre-development study, that was envisaged as a boulevard, pedestrian and bike friendly. Part of the traffic management and demand plan, and I'm sure I'm going to get my acronyms a little mixed up here, is that there's on-street parking, which will supplement the fact that there's only 112 parking spaces when there are expected to be 424 students of driving age. Now, Shaun's reassured us, and I, no reason to doubt this, that especially because of the Latina, high Latina population, there's not going to be a lot of student drivers. However, the traffic demand management plan says any excess parking can be accommodated on those residential streets. So that, to me, is in conflict with the vision of what 34th Avenue should be and should become. And it also raises a point of event parking, which the traffic demand management study also says can be accommodated, particularly in the 2800 block. So what, is there something that could be done about that? Can there be no parking here after hours like they do around St. Thomas and St. Kate's? I don't know, but that's a concern, that we don't have confidence it's going to be addressed. And I think it's because the buildup of the school and the population is going to happen over a number of years. So there's not going to be 788 kids there in year one, right? And the approach from Shaun or the response of Shaun, well, let's see what happens, and if we need to change our strategy. This is a big development on a very small block, and to me, it behooves you guys to actually consider the long-term strategy, regardless of whether that might change over time. Okay. And then there was the Greenway Coalition. So to me, they're supportive of it, not so concerned because of, in the land use study, there's meant to be eyes on the Greenway. I think the building design is really kind of attractive, and what you've done in preserving that front end of the Shasta Building, I really personally like. Not so concerned about that, but I don't think there was a real adequate response in terms of that vision of 34th Avenue feeding kids, bikers, pedestrians, on and off the Greenway. Then from the neighborhood meeting, which Cam Gordon helped us coordinate, which was only last Monday, right? So concerns out of that. There's a huge one about traffic. Now, the traffic demand management study looks great on paper. I don't know whether they actually, whether they're actually there during the time of school that Ann Sullivan and the Annish, and...
National Department.
...school operate, but 28th Street, when I looked up, and Google's awesome, I'm hoping I'm referring to Minnesota ordinances, but I looked up the municipal state aid plan, right, that allocates, I'm assuming, funding to maintenance of roads. 28th Street is one of those roads that I think is under, is at odds with, you know, what they think should be given to that road, and it has a lot of traffic on it. Now, the feeder streets, I don't think are meant to have bus traffic on them at all, but anecdotally, they have bus traffic on them, right? We're not talking about Hiawatha, not talking about, that's a whole other issue of 95 kids being dropped off and curbside cut-ins, right? Even, I think, and it was in Hillary's plan somewhere, and this might have been the pre-development study, but in the pre-development study, they were even recommended that the curbside, it would be better if kids were offloaded on the actual property itself, not using the curbside drop-off. But there is, can I read you a quote from a neighbor? "I currently live on the 2800th block of 38th Avenue, 35th Avenue. During the regular MSP school year, it is not unusual to have up to 15 school buses drive down our street." This is 35th Avenue, so they shouldn't actually be using that street unless we're going to get allocated maintenance dollars to help upkeep as a result of all of these buses driving down that street, right? "Morning and afternoon to reach Ann Sullivan's school. I would like to make sure Hiawatha Academies would have transportation in the works that does not add to this traffic and does not utilize 35th Avenue." So we know there's not going to be the buses, but that does raise a question. In the permission, I can't remember what they're called, the variances, conditional use permit, it's referred to as K to 12. Now Shaun said this is a nine to 12 school, but in various parts of that permit, the language says K to 12. So that just raises a concern about what are we granting a permit for? Is it a nine to 12, where it will always and only be metro transit? Can there be some change of mind in the future where it becomes K to 12, and it could just be a language thing? But that's a concern that perhaps that we'd like to see addressed. So that's the traffic. And in one of the other applications, enforcement, no one is able to enforce what happens. We've had a bus go down that street, knock off a resident's side-view mirror. The recourse to the resident to the school, not our problem, contact the bus company, no resolution, right? It's fine to say that we can enforce these, and I think it was Commissioner Wittenberg who said enforcement is a difficult issue. Well, that's not really a satisfactory answer for the residents when things go wrong. If it's not strictly speaking the liability of the school, how do the residents have recourse? And I truly believe when Shaun says he's got community liaisons, I think that's great, but we haven't had time to talk through all of these issues with Shaun to feel confident that this stuff isn't going to be a major issue. It's a school next to a school, 95 parents dropping kids off between the hours of 7:00 to 8:20, 7:10 to 8:20, is a lot of traffic for that little street. How are they feeding up and down to get to the school for drop-off? And I think, I'm going to leave you to speak to the alley too, because I know I'm going on a bit here. Okay, landscaping. And so I have a different number in the report I looked at on the planning site today, Hillary, so I might have looked at one that was since updated. But I heard landscaping, and I'm a bit confused about the landscaping being perceived as a lot, but the tree allocation actually being much lower than what is required for this area. So from 59 canopy trees to 31 canopy trees, from 292 shrubs to 67 shrubs, but Hillary, I think you said it was 146. And then there was something there in the fine print that said the car park was in proximity to a mature tree. So I guess my question there is, has there been, where is it? There's some tree protection, maybe actually Scott knows this, but there's, is there a tree protection plan? Have they been talking to the urban forestry folks? What is the plan for tree preservation? Is there one? Can we see it that they've actually engaged in earnest dialogue with the forestry, you know, whatever the department is that they're supposed to engage with for that. NPRB, which I think Scott's area, sorry, Commissioner Freeland's area. Okay, that's three. Soccer field, okay. Concerns about the soccer field, and there's variances for the setbacks of this in the plan. It's a big soccer field. Do any of you know the neighborhood? Have you been to that neighborhood besides Commissioner Freeland? Yep. So right opposite is Bracket Park. Huge park, huge facility. I understand the park boards looking at doing soccer fields there, and I understand that you'd want a dedicated, who wouldn't want a dedicated soccer field as part of the school? But the lighting, I think the lighting is going to be approved to be at 60 feet. Is there a requirement that the distance between the light pole and nearest residence is double the height of the light pole? So I don't know how much 120 feet is, but when you look at those illumination plans, which always look good on paper, right, those lumens always fade to the agreeable limit right when it hits the neighborhood property, but I wouldn't want to be living in that house on 28th Street during a soccer event. So I really appreciated Commissioner Gagnon, that hard cutoff for the events. We don't know how many events there are going to be. We don't know if there's going to be 10 events. It was kind of news to us that we're actually going to open them up to the park board to have events when school wasn't there. So we just don't get how much that volume of traffic and people is going to have an impact on us. I read somewhere in the requirement of conditional permit this, which I thought was great, that it will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. No one that we've spoken to, we had 25 people at the Monday night meeting, I'm sure more would be here if it wasn't at 4:30, would actually think that this is a proposal in its current state that's not going to be detrimental or endanger public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare.
We should have you move along with your comments, since I know we have some other people who want to speak as well.
All right. The last one then I'll leave is the well. The well is 415 feet in depth, okay? When you look at the aquifer research, it could be to a very old aquifer, billions of years old. The fact that that well is going to be used as irrigation for a soccer field is egregious to me, right? That's 1 million gallons a year in my calculations to water a soccer field. When, why do you even need a soccer field when you've got Bracket Park 20 feet across the road? Why isn't there a greater collaboration if the school, it really means what they say, that they want to be part of the community, aren't they endeavoring to build up that facility for the community? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Teresa Day. I live at 2817 35th Avenue South. To let you know, I'm the fifth house in, down the south side of where the proposed school is to be. What I want to really address, well, a couple of things. Let me just say, I love education. I have a master's degree, I've had various degrees, and for a school to be one for persons of minority is great. I am a person of color, I belong to the Jiboi tribe, so I'm not disputing that, I love schools. I don't think they have spent time doing a traffic study of this area. I have spent a significant amount of time in the last year helping to drive a friend's stu, child to school, watching more than 80, about 80 parents line up 45 minutes in advance to pick up their school, their kid from school. When they talk about a cutout, and you're talking 28th Street and 36th Avenue, which houses two bus stops, my alley, now, I was told by Cam, why don't I just turn around and go the other direction? I entered the alley from 29th Street to enter my garage. My biggest concern is I have a 50% grade going down my alley right onto 28th Street, and it's flanked by two retaining walls. I creep, even in the summer, I creep down that hill. I narrowly missed hitting somebody's dog who ran across. In the winter, we slide. Now, it's great to say we're going to put sand, it's great to say every one of these homeowners are going to be able to turn around and go the other direction, but I'm fearful with the cutouts being directly right across from there, somebody's, there's going to be accident after accident of the amount of students being dropped off, and that is a fear. I just, I fear every time I come down, even as I creep at two miles an hour. So I'm a very big concern about that. The corner, you think that an hour and a half is nothing compared to dropping those students off? You're going to be backed up, you're going to be through that, and if they show up 45 minutes early, where are they going to park? On top of the Ann Sullivan school buses going down our block and idling, waiting, we're going to have the students, the students' parents. So I just don't think they have spent enough time and visited that area to really look at the amount of traffic on top of being next to the Ann Sullivan school for them to really make a decision this soon. So I hope you consider that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Pardon me for having my cell phone, that's where my notes are here. My name is Travis Kopel. I live at 2808 35th Avenue South, so three houses in from the proposed development. And while my summer attire might not attest to it, I'm actually a public school teacher for Minneapolis Public Schools. So I fully realize the value of education. I have taught students who have, I'm an eighth grade teacher, and I've had, I have students every year who go to Hiawatha Academy as ninth graders, and they have a great program and a strong program. Students come back to say hello and say, "I'm really enjoying my time there." So I fully support the mission, and, and again, being a fellow educator, I completely agree with the, with what it is they're trying to accomplish. However, my concern is not about the school or the program or the great work that they do. My concern is the impact of the proposed site on my neighborhood and my home specifically. 28th Street, aside from the traffic conditions, if you've ever driven down 28th Street, it's like driving on a 35-year-old mattress. You will just rock back and forth the whole way, and if you hit it with any speed, you will lift a wheel off the road. So that street, unless Public Works has a plan to concrete that street, every year they come out with the asphalt, and every year they come back and redo it again. So the increased traffic, aside from the bus traffic, the increased car traffic will further destroy the road that I rely on to access my neighborhood. So that is one concern that I have in regards to that street. The other one, again, is the, is the light poles, as has been mentioned, again, being three houses from the proposed site. While that may be technically more than 120 feet, I guarantee I'm going to see it, and it's going to shine right through my windows. I do have north-facing windows on the home, in fact, my bedroom faces north. So if those lights are kicking at 10 o'clock at night and it's bedtime, then I'm going to see it. It's going to come right through. I don't feel like I need to blackout shade my house for a 60-foot light pole. Also, the recommendation that the field time be limited to a certain hour is a great one, and I hope it's something that the commission will consider, because again, soccer is one of those games like cricket that can go on forever, and then nobody actually wins in the end. So having that, you know, having that be as a possibility, not having a five-hour game with penalty kicks going until all hours of the night, it would be nice to say, hey, if you're not done by nine or 10, you're just going to have to call a tie and move on. Again, if Bracket Park, I know Bracket Park is more designed as a baseball facility, but the outfield is far big enough to where it'd be very easy to stripe for a full-size soccer match, and those light poles already exist, and there's no reason to build new ones if they're already there. Again, pardon my notes here. And then, of course, the construction, and it was previously mentioned in one of the previous applicants, sonic and seismic impact on the neighborhood. Again, being three houses down from a 74,000-square-foot renovation, I can't imagine the sonic or seismic impact, the sonic and seismic impact on the quality of life on our home during the construction time is just going to be intense. Again, 70, building, it's not like your building is shed in the backyard. 74,000 feet of concrete and steel is going to shake and make some noise. So that is a concern that I have. Ultimately, my greatest concern with the project is the, is the process that was gone through with the neighborhood. It has been noted that the Longfellow Community Council, the Greenway Coalition, the Greenway and the Seward, I can't remember the exact, thank you, all had meetings and got together with it, and, but the neighborhood found out less than two weeks ago. I was on vacation all last week and found out to a note under my door. Subsequently this morning, as I was driving by... Subsequently this morning, as I was driving by the site, I noticed a pink piece of paper plastered to the side of the building, so I walked up and read it, and it noted all the agenda items that we were discussing this evening. So, why didn't I go up and read the piece of paper? There also, it's right next to those signs, are no trespassing facilities under surveillance, and there's been security cars parked outside. I'm not going to go walk up the hill and read a piece of paper with a security car and no trespassing sign with cameras watching my every move. So the biggest concern here is while I, you know, they own the land, and I can't imagine how much they paid for that building and the land that it sits on. So I think it's kind of set that guess this project is going to move forward. And I also realize, again, being a teacher, the timeline that goes into this, recognizing that school needs to start when it needs to start. However, I think one month, you know, your next meeting I believe is July 17th, I think one month, having that month instead of a week for us to work out some of the issues that the neighborhood has would be beneficial. I think Hiawatha Academy would find greater acceptance within the neighborhood if we could take the time to not only speak to the councils, but to the people who live in those neighborhoods. The council is a small group of people. Now that the neighborhood knows that this is happening, we would love to see more time spent discussing, again, with those of us who live three, five, seven houses down, what can we do to make everyone happy with this proposal? Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. And would anyone else like to speak on this item? Any other speakers? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we have several applications before us on this item, total of seven. Are there any further questions of staff, or would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Gagnon.
Are there any different requirements because they want to build a soccer field for notice in the neighborhood than just the 300-foot perimeter?
Commissioner Gagnon, no, it's just the 350-foot radius that is required to be notified.
Okay. Any further questions? So we have a total of seven applications. The first one is a conditional use permit for the school. Variances related to the soccer field, site plan for the building. Commissioner Lipke here.
Actually, I have a question for staff in regard to conditional use permit number two, K-12, if they could get some clarification on, I believe one of the speakers had a question regarding whether it was K-12 or 912.
The zoning code used listed in the ordinance is, as it is listed here, school common grades K through 12, so that is how I noticed the project. It is my understanding that it is a high school, 9 through 12.
Mr. Wittenberg.
Thank you.
Just to expand on that, commissioners, there are different parking requirements based on the number of driving age students in a school. So the school age with higher number of students who are able to drive has a higher parking requirement than, than K through nine or whatever.
And also to clarify, one of the speakers had asked about, could the type of school it is change over the time? With this conditional use permit, is it limited to a certain type of school or this, this particular application, or what would trigger amendment of that conditional use permit if the tenant of the building changed?
I think if it was this school and they wanted to include additional grades, I don't think there would be an issue with that unless they added, well, we've already accounted for the students of driving age, which is really the only additional code requirement that we would look at.
Commissioner Gagnon to give us something else.
So there are no parking requirements for the soccer field?
No. It's, a parking requirement for schools is based on the number of classrooms, the number of students of driving age.
Okay, so we in the city of Minneapolis, if a soccer field is built or any field, we don't have any parking?
If it's part of the school, no.
Requirements?
Okay. Just like we don't have a parking requirement for a gymnasium, for example, which is part of, say, an athletic club would have a different type of parking requirement. It's accessory to the school.
Okay, but again, so that's fine. The expectation though is people are going to need to park visitors, watchers, and I know like for our soccer, our fields that are disconnected from schools, there's parking all up and down the neighborhoods, all over the place. So that's just going to be a reality.
All right. Would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Magrino.
I'll ask one quick clarifying question. So item G, the site plan review for the building, in the addition, does that include the soccer field, or is that, is the soccer field covered with variances, or is that in G? If someone was going to put a condition on the soccer field, would you want to put it in G?
If it's part of the field, or are you thinking of the lights?
Lights specifically.
I would add that then to the variance for the height of the lights.
For the height, okay.
I would add that to C.
Okay.
I'm sorry, not C, B.
B, okay. I will, okay, I'll start us off, and I will make a motion to approve items A and B, the conditional use permits. I would add a third condition to item B, requiring that the lights on the light poles at the athletic field be turned off after 10:00 PM.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve items A and B, the conditional use permits with an amendment to conditional use permit B, adding a third condition that the lights are turned off at 10:00 PM. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lipke here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
7-0.
All right. We have several more applications before us, starting with the C variance.
Thanks. I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendation and approve the four variances on items C, D, E, and F.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve variances C, D, E, and F. Any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lipke here?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
7-0.
All right. And that motion carries. Commissioner Magrino.
And I will make a motion to approve the application for site plan review in item G. I would also change condition one there, it looks like we also have 2017, so I would change that to June 26th of 2019.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve item G, the site plan review with that modification to condition one, changing 2017 to 2019. Is there any further discussion? I'll just add, and I think several of the neighbors have now left, but, you know, I certainly understand the concerns about traffic. When you have a vacant building that's going to be reoccupied with something that at, at least at certain times of day, you know, has pretty intense use, and particularly with the soccer field, when there are events, there can result in a lot of traffic. I'm pretty confident though that, that occupant of this building will try to be a good neighbor. It seems like they've demonstrated that they're willing to work with the neighbors, and if there are further traffic issues or parking issues that need to be sorted out, I think there is still opportunity to do that. Commissioner Gagnon.
Sorry. I just wanted to comment on that too. I believe the school's start and end times are very, very different for Hiawatha and Sullivan, so that should also play a role in allowing, I mean, it's not going to help the streets not become disrepair, but it will help the traffic patterns that the, I know Sullivan has some after-school activities and stuff too, but I still think at least the end times are very, very different, and I believe the start times, it's an early start school.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Vreeland.
Yes, and I just wanted to say something about the stormwater. I really don't know the specific details of stormwater mitigation. It's a large area, and certainly using stormwater rather than the aquifer would be a better use of both decreasing the negative impact of stormwater on the river that this water would drain to. So if there's a cistern system or other systems, I'm also a watershed commissioner with Mississippi Watershed Management Organization, and we could be helpful with the technologies and maybe even some funding of some strategies to use stormwater as your first, your first choice for mitigating stormwater issues and keeping your field green.
Right. Thank you for that comment. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan, and clerk, please call the roll.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lipke here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
7-0.
All right. And that concludes our discussion on item five. Our final item for discussion tonight is item six, 1500 Nicolet, and staff is Ms. DeVorec. And we've seen this project a couple times at committee the whole, so perhaps however you'd like to just hit on some of the outstanding issues, I understand the applicant maybe has some concerns with a few of the conditions.
Thank you for winning the lottery of interesting discussion items.
You are very welcome. This is the 1500 Nicolet project. We have seen, you have seen this at committee the whole twice. So I guess to abbreviate, and the applicants are here to speak to some of the conditions pertaining to the conditional use permit for the planned unit development, and also the site plan review. But there are other applications, and so I'm, to be fair to those in the audience, I will quickly run through those as I think I should have done that for item, the first item I presented on this evening. So there's a rezoning of the properties, those that are C1, which is the majority of the site, to the C2. The conditional use permit then for the planned unit development, a variance to increase the maximum permitted floor area from 2.72 to 3.89. A variance of the PO overlay district standards to allow a single commercial use to have more than 120 feet of frontage, and that is along West 15th Street, it's 135 feet of frontage that they have. A variance of fence height from 6 to 10 along Nicolet, I know that you all gave me eyes, it's not as scary as it sounds, but I will point out where, where those fence heights are. 6 to 10, some of it has to do with grade change, some has to do with the garage wall that projects above grade. There is site plan review and then the preliminary plat. I'm going to skip forward, they do meet the point requirements, we are not recommending approval of the points that they submitted or applied for, if you will, in the PUD. They do achieve the required number of points that are necessary, and they are not, at least as far as I know, they are not debating the rationale for us not recommending approval of all of those points. This is just a site plan that gives you a little bit better visual on the overhead, this, what is brown on your salmon-colored, is the decorative pavement on the site, and so it delineates the, the site plan for you. Everything in the courtyard areas that you see, and then along the streets, that's not that decorative pavement, is landscaping. Maybe just to show you a little bit more of a sight, and the colors are coming out awful on your overhead. This is that public pathway that connects Nicolet Avenue to the public sidewalk then on Oak Grove. This is the public sidewalk along Nicolet and 15th. We did have some conversations about the public sidewalk on 15th and landscaping versus no landscaping, and the neighborhood and Public Works agree that no landscaping is best, given the narrowness of that site. We did have that conversation at committee the whole. The end result is no landscaping, they do have landscaping on their property and back of the property line with planters and whatnot, but you, we, some of the commissioners, I think debated actually, but there is no landscaping there. We are adding landscaping along Nicolet, both in the right-of-way and then on the private property. And then the line through the middle of the site throws that, shows that, excuse me, that through-block connection from Nicolet through this main courtyard, and then to the different activity points along the alley. This is the southern courtyard that is talked about in the staff report, this is where the children's play equipment is located on the site. There are some alternative compliance measures that are being asked for in site plan review. One is building placement, that courtyard area of the building at the, the south, excuse me, the north end of the site is recessed 173 feet, excuse me, from, from Nicolet. We are recommending approval, this is a design element that you see in many of the older buildings in the neighborhood. We are recommending that you grant alternative compliance. They have some blank wall issues on the site, one is on an interior wall of the building, they're mitigating that through landscaping, and then on the, one portion of the wall that faces the alley is actually recessed underneath the building, and they're loading dock base, so it is set fairly far back from the property line, so you, you really won't see that per se, because it is, it will be in shadow with the building floor plate above. The exterior material percentages, they do have a high percentage of fiber cement on the elevation facing the alley, 30% is what is allowed, they have 55%. That fiber cement is concentrated towards the interior of the building. Again, this, just for reference, this is the link that connects the north building and the south building. We are recommending that you grant alternative compliance for that, it does face the alley and it faces a series of residential buildings that range between four and six stories. So where they have then on the street-facing signs of the building and the side of the building that faces 94, which while it's not a street, it does get, does have visibility to those driving in, in the 94 trench, they, they have met those percentages. The number of materials per elevation, they do exceed that. In most cases, they have four materials per elevation, however, that fourth material is a stone, it's used as the window sills and is accent materials on those, and so we are recommending that you grant alternative compliance for that. And then the last one is the landscaped yard and screening in the loading area, if we put landscaping there, you would not, well, one, it would be under the building, and two, it would hinder maneuvering into and out of, into and out of the loading spaces, and so we're recommending alternative compliance. I'm going to the conditions of approval for site plan review, the, the one condition that I know they do want to talk about is the condition, and it's in the conditional use permit, and then also the variance of FAR, is the condition about the 85% of the ground floor of the north building be commercial, retail uses. And so this is of, not the floor plan, but this is a plan that shows the, the floor plan. The commercial space in the building is concentrated in this location. That is your retail, all of this element, I'm going to do a little different, this is building amenity space, if you will, the lobby, the workout room, the yoga room, what have it. And then from this line over, this is all residential units. There is a three-foot grade change about here in the building, and so all of those units, as you may remember from committee the whole, have been converted to the live-work units. They do have staircases, however, from the street, given the elevation change on the property. Also for ADA, if one did have a business and one needed to go into the business and they needed an accessible route, they would have to go through the front, the main residential entrances, and so that would be a management issue that would need to be addressed. But that was their attempt at meeting a, a commercial presence on Nicolet. We felt that because of the FAR that is needed and the activity center and the commercial corridor, and we're in downtown growth center, that we did want to see more commercial in the building. And so we did add that condition that you have 85% of that ground floor in the north, just in the north building be retail, so that would, you know, that just in the north building be retail, so that would, you know, that takes out trash, elevator, staircase, towers, whatnot, allows room for that. And so it would be all of this, then, that we would be looking at, you know, 85% of this ground floor be commercial. So that is one condition that I know they want to talk about. They want to talk about the, the skyway, bird-safe glass conditions. They've run some numbers, and I'll let them present. We do have a condition that they add pedestrian scale lighting in and around the perimeter of the play area. If you looked at the lighting plan, a lot of my projects have to do with lights today. There are perimeter lights on the side of the building, but those are controlled by the units themselves, the unit owners or the renters. There is the one main entrance in the building which has a light over it. However, at night, if you choose not to have your porch light on, it's going to be dark. Kids want to play at all, maybe not all hours of the night, but when it is dark in certain seasons, when it is still okay to go outside. And so we are recommending that they put some lights in that, in or around the play area, and I didn't specify what kind or whatnot, but just that we have lighting levels that allow children to play at night. We also have conditions about benches and trash and recycling receptacles in that area, because parents like to sit, and then you also do have trash, because you feed your children, you bring them out to play. And then we are, this is just a suggestion, it's not a requirement, but we are recommending that the applicant consider reducing the amount of colors of the fiber cement. They have four. We would like to see less than four, but we, again, we're not mandating that, it's just a point of conversation, or if no one has any thoughts on it, you know, we can talk about that further, and they can tell you why they want to have that number of colors. The other conditions of approval then that are under the site plan review, this is the main entrance into that north residential, into the lobby space, if you will, so if you are a guest, even, I think, well, you may be able to get into this lobby, but if you're coming to the building, this is that main lobby space or the main entrance. It is recessed more than the eight feet back from that front property line, so we're recommending a condition that that be brought up. This is part of the lobby, and I'm sorry, I'm just drawing all over this now. This is part of the lobby for the residence, and so it could be reworked to have that entrance be closer to the front property line. We have a requirement that there be 82 long-term bike parking spaces for the residents in the building, and so I know that they are amenable to that. And then the, the, this is the mechanical units that are located along in the alley. This is that path, there's a dog run that's partially on their property, but partially on the 94 property, that will be open to the residents and also to the residents in the neighborhood. And so there's landscaping here, there is a residential building right here, so we're just suggesting that instead of all of this, that they add additional landscaping to further screen that. So I think those are all of the conditions that we have, and I know that they are here to speak, and I will stand for any questions.
All right. Hillary, the 85% of the floor area, about how much retail space does that equate to? What is the size of the footprint of that building?
That's a good question. I think the...
I can ask the applicant too, maybe they would know that.
Yeah, I think I can probably find it quick. I just, if I had my...
Can I give you a assist quick?
Sure.
It's, it's 17,100 for the overall building minus the parking way down, and it would need to be about 14,500 if it was going to be 85% retail.
Okay. And in the 85% of the frontage, I assume that that courtyard area makes up more than 15% probably, so would that, if, if, if we were to require 85% of the frontage along Nicolet be retail, would that have to include some of that area potentially?
I would not say that this is the frontage of Nicolet. I would say that you're, I would measure this part of the building, I think, because it's recessed so far back. Now, one, if anyone disagrees, please, please tell me, but I would not, I would not count that, given how far back it's recessed.
Okay. Commissioner Crownsor, do you have a question?
Really quick. Hillary, under conditional use permit, condition seven, can you explain that a little bit? Not seeing a condition like that.
The one condition I didn't talk about. So they have applied for the public art amenity point.
So it's related to the...
I'm sorry, yes, it's related to the...
Percent of art.
Yep, pertain to the public art piece, because the value of the art needs to be, it's one, one quarter of 1% of the total capital cost of the project, and so we would need to understand that value. This is a, this is a condition, if you remember Be the Match, they had a public art piece, but they didn't know what they wanted to do, they hadn't found an artist, and so after the fact, I worked with their artists and, you know, made sure that everything, that the dollar amounts, that the numbers worked out, but that also that there was a public art piece. And so they are proposing public art to sit in the middle of this, but again, it's early in the process, they haven't selected an artist, they don't know what it is. I would work with them and their artists then to ensure that the value equals what our code requires.
Okay. I didn't think you were viewing that before.
No, I am.
No, we can do that.
All right. If there are no further questions of staff, I'll open the public hearing. Commissioner Magrino, you have a question?
So just to be clear with the 85% frontage on Nicolet, that would, I mean, that basically require them to dedicate what's currently embarked as the lobby to be a new retail space, or do we include the live-work unit in that 85%?
I would include that, you know, I would draw the line here, so that would include that one dwelling unit, so 85% of that total.
Yeah, but so do we, are we including the live-work unit as commercial space?
I mean, the way that I, yes, and the way that I look at the condition is that whole ground floor needs to be reworked. I don't see any other way to meet that condition without reworking that. So that means maybe there are no dwelling units at all on the ground floor, maybe there's no amenity space for the residents, maybe that shifts to a different part of the building. I'm not sure. I'd like, you know, the applicant and I have discussed this a little bit, but not, not to the extent of, if, if that is, remains a condition of approval, what, what happens? That's what we're here for today.
Okay. Okay. If there are no further questions of staff, I'll open the public hearing. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, and maybe you can help us understand your concerns with various conditions.
President Brown and Planning Commission members, my name is Ryan Lunderby. I'm with Dominion, address is 18625 29th Avenue North, Plymouth, Minnesota. Thank you for your consideration tonight, and thanks, Hillary, for, for all of your work on the project to get us to this point. Overall, we've got a, a great project proposed. We think we're providing a mixed-use project that brings 184 low-income housing tax credit units to the downtown area, and, and an area where, where we think would, would redevelop, provide a good redevelopment along Nicolet Avenue that's needed, and then also bring, bring value to the adjacent underdeveloped parcels that are there. We're incorporating multiple uses into the project, affordable housing, public courtyard spaces, live-work units, units, retail, private playgrounds, courtyard space for children and the residents, solar rooftop amenity, among other things. A complicated project, given the affordable housing, the structure that's proposed with cap rents, especially in this location. We've worked closely with the council member, the Laurin Park Neighborhood Association, who's, who's here tonight as well, have had multiple meetings with them, the police department, and other groups to develop the current design that's before you tonight. I believe there are about 17 conditions outlined in the staff report to the project in total, and I think roughly 12 or 13 of those were agreeable to, without, without any further discussion, and I'd like to invite Chris Pelkowitz up from BKB to start going through the, the items we'd like to discuss further.
Thank you, Ryan. My name's Chris Pelkowitz, architect with BKB Group, 222, 222 North Second Street, sorry, Minneapolis. First one I'd like to address is the, the principal entry discussion point, that the, the policy is to have it within eight feet from the property line. We really took our design cues for this from the, from the neighborhood and from the context of a lot of historic projects. You can see on the, the map here, the, all the projects in the light buff are projects that have a courtyard-style entry. The two closest to us being the Buckingham Apartments here and 125 Oak Grove Street. All of these really kind of helped design, are, give a lot of cues to design our building overall. As you can see, the shape of our overall building then ends up being two courtyards. One towards Nicolet, which is to be our entry courtyard area, and then one towards the alley side, really to capture the western sun, and that's our kids' play area. And it's more of the kind of what we call the backyard, a little bit of the building And just one more bird's eye as a reminder, a little bit of that courtyard-type feel overall of how you're seeing the two buildings and then the link in the center. So to, to speak more directly to the courtyard entry, we're approximately just over 28 feet from the property line. Here is the entry point here, as Hillary brought up. We, we feel we've done a, a number of items to really maximize the visibility and create a cohesive overall architectural feature of how this entry works. The overall of the north entry inhabits this entire portion. It's split in half, you can see the fences, the fence through here. There's a private resident courtyard more in, on the inner portion of the building. And then as you get out towards the street, it's a, a public court, and we enter through the public court area. So that public court is really this entire area right here. Additionally, from there, we have an entry canopy overhead that comes all the way out and within three feet of the property line, and we'll have our entry signage, and we're not presenting the entry signage today, but that's the, where we're looking to locate it, and you'll see that on the next view. Some of the other features we're doing is using some low-lying landscape and building up that courtyard to be visually interesting, but still allow that clear access right to the entry point, and then using colored concrete as well to provide a clear path of entry. Finally, as you can see in the perspective here, the, the entry lounge is, is on the edge here on the corner, and what we're really trying to do is create a really vibrant street fund and have that lounge really be part of the courtyard and all of the entry sequences that comes together. And we feel that by bringing that canopy out and really opening up that edge with large storefront windows, we're activating that corner and giving a clear sense of where the entry is. The, the next item to discuss is the, the retail portion and the 85% previously discussed. I created a new diagram for today to just kind of help walk everybody through it. Sorry for not sharing this with the, the staff at this point yet, but it's, it's all, it's the same information, it's just kind of trying to do it in a more clear, concise way to deliver it for today's discussion. Pardon? Yeah, I don't know if I am, or... Okay. So the north building, to give a little more context or a little more information, here is the retail portion here along 15th Street and at the primary corner, and for 67 feet along Nicolet. The primary entry we just discussed, and the entry court that's open to the public, and then our first live-work unit on the corner. To, we, we think we're, you know, as you'll see in some of these future perspectives, we think we're providing a great, a great walkable, vibrant community in this building, and be happy to share with it more. But we were, really going back to that 85% portion, we excluded the vertical circulation here and here, and it only left us with this back portion here, overall of this 85%, if we're looking at just at the floor, just by square feet. And, you know, that, that could certainly be positioned in different locations, but it, it really leaves us with a, a difficult opportunity to, where to locate retail, if, you know, as we get further, further from the street and closer to the alley, becomes more difficult to use overall, but just wanted to, to give that visual piece there. And for the, as for the perimeter piece, we, we consider the live-work in our minds to be part of the retail square footage overall. It's a little difference there. And of the, of the north building, of the Nicolet frontage of what was requested would be, excluding the courtyard, would be 72% overall of that, and of the entire north building, including 15th Street, we are at 74.7%.
I think Commissioner Lukey Pierre has a question for you on this issue.
I just had a clarification, a question for, for staff. Is it linear feet of, along Nicolet that we're talking about, or square footage? And if so, to what depth, in terms of required retail?
Commissioners, I can probably respond to that. It, the, the recommendation is that both, that 85% of the square footage of that ground floor be commercial, and then also 85% of the frontage. We didn't specify the depth that that...
And frontage along Nicolet, not frontage along the corner?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, yes, I can understand that piece. And further through this is, you know, working through the comprehensive plan and the neighborhood master plan, there isn't a, the 85% is not a part of the policy of the, within the code itself. So it's, we're trying to find a, a median here with, working with staff. To show a few more images, oh, yeah, absolutely, please.
Just, just a couple of more points on the, more on the 85% of the square footage requirement. So, you know, we've engaged a, a retail consultant along the way and been working with them for a number of months, and there are, you know, recommendations from them where retail tenants, in order to lease that space, they look, they would much prefer a shallow depth of a retail space where you get more storefront square footage versus deeper space and a narrower storefront. So that space to the back of the building towards the alley is much less valuable to them. And so, you know, I, I think, you know, that, that makes that challenging. The other thing about requiring 85% is it virtually leaves us with no space to operate the property. We're either stripping our amenities from the project, or if we relocate them, what would happen is we'd bring down the unit count of the project, which will make it pretty much infeasible to do. The other complication deals with the affordable housing nature of the project, and when we increase space of retail and decrease unit space, we are able to generate less tax credits for the project, and so there's less equity that we're able to bring into the project to offset costs, and because our rents are capped, our loan amounts, and so that we can support are fixed. So that, the affordable housing aspect of this brings another very challenging element to meeting the 85% total square footage.
Can you help us understand why you prefer to have that retail frontage along 15th Street? I know our comprehensive plan tends to envision more continuous commercial along designated commercial corridors like Nicolet as opposed to 15th Street. Is it more the location, is it the, the depth of the space or access to the alley? Maybe you could help us understand why you preferred to locate the retail in that part of the building?
Sure. When we were doing our initial studies, it was really driven by the traffic counts. That 15th is, I don't know if it's exactly double, but a much higher level of traffic through there, it was just going to create, create just more visibility of that space overall. And, you know, working through the layers with the neighborhood and having multiple meetings, we, you know, worked to create the live-work, to, to create, you know, that kind of semi, semi-retail along Nicolet, because we understand the importance of it along there as well, and the pedestrian experience.
And that, that was a concept that was actually brought forth by the, the neighborhood and their board through several meetings of working to, to develop the project.
So, I'm sorry, just to follow up on that. So for, you're saying on one hand that the live-work unit counts as retail, but the thought of switching it on the corner of 15th instead of Nicolet won't work, for what, for what reason?
We, well, the, the primary corner is retail right now. We have, so along, you know, this is our primary retail space here.
Yeah.
So then, a, as we got further down, that's where we were doing the live-work down the, down the way.
Okay, so but the one red unit on, on that, yep. So that one's kind of separated from the other live-work, because there, there's a car...
It is separated by the others... It is separated by the others, but it is, there are three, there are three units along here, and it has a door connection to the lobby as well. So it can have that, that street connection for the public and then the resident connection from the rear.
Thank you.
And I should clarify, the staff is not considering live-work units to be retail. So that's clear. We can let you continue with your presentation now.
Sure. Just wanted to show the activation of that pedestrian realm along Nicollet. Here is the corner at 15th and Nicollet. You can see the restaurant or potential restaurant or the retail space extending from the corner here all the way to the corner at the other edge to the alley. A more focused image along 15th, just to show the activation that we'll be creating along the street, kind of vice versa to what's currently there right now. And we are stepping it back a little bit more, so there will be a little bit more room, as that's a tight sidewalk right now. And then along the south building, here are the live-work units that are being discussed overall, and you can see just the vibrancy within there and the signage and just the visual relationship in and out and the pedestrian realm that we created. One more view, just being on the sidewalk itself, to just give a little bit more information overall. And you can see on the south building at the center, there is an additional resident entry at that point. You can see the canopy of it right through this area there.
No, just a clarify request would be to remove the total square footage requirement and then adjust the percentage to the 72% that Chris noted, which would include that live-work unit.
The last piece for me to bring up visually here, and then there's a couple more items from Ryan, are the, to speak to the four colors that were mentioned before as the recommendation, and just wanted to just give some clarification on that quickly. So on the north building, on this portion here, and then here is the alley side of it right here, that building features two colors of fiber cement, the first one being in the brown here to complement the brick after you've turned the corner, and there's a slight building recess here. So that we're really focusing our primary materials, the stone, the four stories of brick, and even metal at the top of this building, to the primary street frontages. And then we're doing lesser materials as we turn the corner, but keeping the same massing and the same coloration overall to give the appearance that it's working as a cohesive unit here. And really, it's the main facade along 15th and Nicollet there are really driven by the relationship as you go down the cell. And you look at some of the beautiful buildings on there, like the Buckingham Apartments and others, that, you know, much, very rich brick and masonry, high quality to them within their design. And again, being an affordable project, we're trying to find the balance of fitting in to that neighborhood and making the costs all work out at the end. So the first color of the fiber cement is the brown. The second is a bronze along the top here. On the south building, it has three colors of fiber cement. Here's the front facade where it is, the brick number one, the brown brick on the base, orange brick in the center, and then it's fiber cement, bronze fiber cement at the top. As you make your way along the south elevation and turn to the alley, we bring it back one bay, and then we switch colors here to gray, which I'll mention in a moment. And then the fiber cement on the rear matches the brick as well to keep with that same, the same heights and the same massing. On the courtyard side, through working with Dominion, them leasing many, many units throughout the country, that they're really recommending a lighter color at the top of that side, saying it's going to have low visibility from the street, but when you get into that enclosed courtyard, having a dark color at the top really kind of makes the entire courtyard feel rather dark overall. So working with that, we stayed within the palette and chose a gray paint that would match the metal that's seen throughout the building.
I think the last couple of items relate, one of them relates to the link and the Skyway regulations for that. So we're viewing this as basically a corridor use that's for our residents of the project, a private use for them. I think we can accommodate the glazing requirement. We're close to that now. I think we're 6% under the 80% requirement for the glazing. In looking at the birdproof glass, the costs of that, at least initially from Pella through Weiss Builders, is that that would be an add to the project of about $190,000 to do that link in the birdproof glass. We're currently getting a lot of feedback from CPED on the financing side of things for cost containment. And we're looking for ways to keep our costs where we have them currently through our application with them. And they've made that pretty clear along the way. So we're asking for, to, we can meet the glazing requirement, but we're asking for leniency on the birdproof requirement for the type of glass. And then lastly, kind of in, related to the cost containment, and Hillary, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about this, so in regards to the PUD points, we'd be okay with whatever you guys decide, but what, meaning that, being that we have enough PUD points above the requirement, we want to see if you would consider actually removing the requirement for the art feature as a three-point PUD item, just because it would save the project some costs as well in that regard, given that our budget is kind of maxed out with CPED on the financing side. So if that's something you would consider tonight, we'd appreciate it. If not, we'll take that, too.
All right. Are there any questions of the applicant? I might clarify one thing quickly or ask Mr. Wittenberg to clarify. On the bird-safe glass issue, I understand there's a separate approval process or administrative approval process for that, that that level of detail isn't actually considered with the site plan review? Is that correct?
That is correct, Commissioners, that there's an administrative review of the Skyway standards, but there's an appeal process from that that actually goes through the Planning Commission. Those rules were adopted within the past year, so you haven't seen any of those kinds of appeals yet.
All right. Commissioner Lukey-Pear?
Yeah, I actually had a question for the applicant. So, correct me if I'm wrong, is the Skyway there just to avoid having to add stairwells for egress?
Nope. Actually, it would be cheaper for us to add stairwells.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. It seems like this is adding up. Do you really need the Skyway?
But we think it'd be a great feature for the residents. We think it'd provide a better way of life for, in the winter, they wouldn't have to either cross the center courtyard in the winter or have the hassle of going down into the parking structure to get to the other elevator lobby in the north building. So we see it as a good amenity for the residents.
But there's elevators in both buildings, and there's, I mean, it's a lobby, but that's the benefit. It's worth that expense to give them a hallway, even though they have to go outside to go somewhere in winter anyway. I'm just wondering, I'm trying to figure out the rationale.
I think it would be a benefit, considering that the amenity spaces in the management office and so forth are located in the north building.
Thank you.
Mr. Cronze?
I just had, I had one quick question on the decorative lighting that's proposed. It's 1,250 lumens. Is that fixture completely unshielded? Is that the output, the decorative lighting?
The, if it's the fixture that's along the sconce?
Yes.
Okay. I believe that is unshielded. I believe it. Well, no, I mean, it has a, you know, a simple shield. It's a simple shield in front of it, but I don't know, I don't know what it's doing at that point beyond.
Okay. Because I think that's too bright if it's just out there, so I think, if you can work with staff to find something that's downshielded and a little less glaring.
We're happy to review it.
Any further questions of the applicant? Commissioner Magrino?
I have a question, maybe for the applicant, maybe Mr. Wittenberg. With the live-work units in the south building, you know, we discussed that there's a stairway, so it's not necessarily going to have ADA access off the street, but that they would be able to go through the building. Is there any potential, like, would they have trouble getting a business license for certain kinds of businesses to use the interior of the building and mixing residential space and potentially commercial space? Are there any concerns with whether or not that space would really be able to be used as retail, having steps leading to the front doors?
Mr. Wittenberg?
Commissioners, I agree, that is a potential concern. I don't know where the line is in terms of the building code kicking in accessibility requirements for a home occupation. That's an excellent question.
All right. Does the applicant have any, do you happen to know?
We are continuing to review it with the City Accessibility Committee. Our basic concept that we presented today was that the, on the south building, there is that primary building entry with the elevator right there, so that that can bring someone up the three, like, three feet at that point. And if it was an appointment-type of thing, they could get them in that way.
Just to speak to the management end of that, we think that might be a benefit or have other benefits to it, given that the visitors of that retail space would use the entry system to get buzzed in as well. And so that provides another control feature from a management perspective as well.
Are there any further questions? Commissioner Lukey-Pear?
Did the ADA Advisory Committee have any insight as to whether or not they, did they give you any decision or are they, because it seems in the past, when things have come up, the idea of having to schedule accessibility has been a no-no.
We've had, we had an initial meeting with them, and the layout was a little problematic, and we're developing alternate ideas, but haven't presented that to them again yet.
All right, yeah, thank you. I'd be curious to see that.
All right. Well, if there aren't any further questions of the applicant, we can see if there's anyone else who would like to speak on this item. Is there anyone? Yes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Ladonna Moniki. I live at 210 West Grant, and I am a board member of Citizens for Loring Park Community, and I'm also on the land use committee. We are very supportive of this project. With that said, we do want to stress importance of commercial uses along the Nicollet since it is a commercial corridor, with the ultimate future hope of reconnecting that community to Stevens Square, bridging over the freeway as 20 years of the Nico Avenue redevelopment plan, including our Met Council-approved small area, have promoted. CLCP wants to acknowledge the development team. They did a great job of working with the neighborhood, listening to our concerns, and incorporating the changes based on what they heard in their draft plans. They attended two Nicollet meetings, board meetings, two land use meetings, and kept in touch several times a week with our coordinator. The artist housing concept came from a discussion for the need for commercial space along Nicollet and the need for the developers to deal with finance. It was a win-win solution. Adding a playground for the children came from the Minneapolis Police, their input during the Nicollet business meeting, when it was found that such an amenity for families was missing. Also landscaping the stretch next to the freeway edge was another community concern. We wanted to ensure that we were addressing areas where crime could thrive. CLCP will continue to work with the development team throughout the construction of the project to communicate weekly project updates, staging of the construction, and with identifying prospective commercial tenants. Specifically, we want to thank Tom Norbyke for being the project's community liaison. He was very helpful in facilitating a successful process. In October of 2015, I spoke before this very commission about the need to develop Nicollet, excuse me, south of Grant and north of the freeway. It was a part of our rezoning plan. So it's with a lot of enthusiasm that we look forward to new energy and new life on this block of Nicollet and beyond. Thank you for listening again.
Thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, and please state your name and address for the record. Thanks for sticking around during the long meeting.
You are welcome. Hello, I'm Janne Metchie, and I'm the coordinator of CLPC, Citizens for Loring Park Community, 1645 Hanipan Avenue South, Suite 204, Minneapolis 55403. Just a couple of extra points I just wanted to throw out. At one of the last COW meetings that I was at, someone brought up the Eat Street Streetscape. And so we were able to get through Public Works the Streetscape guidelines that go from Grant Avenue all the way to 29th to BKVs, so they can be integrated with the project. And then I also wanted to make just one comment about the accessibility of the artist housing units on Nicollet. So if you think about the apartment buildings north, on the north end of Nicollet, you have three senior high-rises, then you have Booth Manor that is adjacent to the park, lots of seniors with differing accessibility needs. And when we conversed with those neighbors and those neighbors brought information to our board, they want us to continue working with the development team on the accessibility of the artist units along Nicollet. They feel like if, for instance, their studio space is facing Nicollet and they don't have access to that, that it is something they'd like us to continue to work on if possible and if financially feasible. And so our board at our last meeting said that we would bring this up to the commission as well. So we will continue to work with the team. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Yes, go ahead.
So in relation to the accessibility, we've been working with the Accessibility Committee, and I think we will address Janet's concern and the neighborhood, and ultimately, if that leads to providing accessible entrances at the street, we will, we would commit to that. Lastly, just, you know, the project is at a point where we are a couple of months from closing. We have secured financing commitments for all the financing with HUD. We have an investor that's willing to provide equity of over $20 million to the project, has approved it in its current state, and we're hopeful that you'll approve tonight.
All right, thank you. And one last time, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have several applications, seven total. Commissioner Lukey-Pear and then Commissioner Slaw.
I just had a question for staff. I was looking at the CUP condition number two, where it talks about the intent of the mixed-use density bonus. And if they weren't utilizing the mixed-use density bonus, what other land use applications do they have been applying for instead, given that one of the conditions is 85% of the ground floor being retail? Are there other land use applications they would have applied for instead to get a density bonus?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Yeah, if they weren't, if they're unable to meet that criteria, or if somehow we don't, we're not squishy with it, are there other tools they could have utilized to get a density bonus?
No, they have exhausted this. It's the variance. So it's item C then on the application.
Awesome, thank you, that was my question.
Commissioner Slaw?
Yeah, before I make a motion, I just wanted to provide a couple of comments. I think first, thanks for everybody who came out to testify. We appreciate that. I think for the applicants, we, as a planning commission, I won't speak for everybody, but for myself, appreciate the opportunity to come to the committee the whole twice, to have conversations with us about this project. It's helpful, and I think through that sort of process, we're able to learn about the project and some of the issues. With that, I think there's two issues for me that, from the first meeting on, that... on, that were really big for me, one being retail along Nicollet, hasn't changed, and the second being the Skyway. I don't really see the purpose for it personally, and has always been an issue from, from built form standpoint. I do really like the project a lot. I think it brings a lot of value to that part of the neighborhood and to Nicollet. And so I will be voting in approving all the applications tonight, but personally, I don't, I don't think we should be changing any of the conditions. I would like to have a conversation with other members of the committee about the 85%. I don't know if 85% of the ground floor is necessarily the right number. For me, it's sort of 85% of the frontage along Nicollet is more something that should be applied. I do see some issues with trying to fill out 85% of the entire ground floor. And then I also don't agree with the live work. I don't think that that meets sort of the intent of, of what we're looking for from the standpoint of retail. So I will be pushing forward or making recommendations on these motions and potentially having conversation about changing that Item Number Two, but I think that, at least from what we've seen from staff, is appropriate.
And, all right, so was that a motion, Commissioner Slack, or was that?
The motion, first motion is, that was a statement.
Okay.
Is, move staff recommendation for Item A rezoning.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Item A, the rezoning. And is there any further discussion on, on that? And we can take the rest of the applications in a minute. So we have no further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gignan?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
McGreeno?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
Seven zero.
All right, moving along. Commissioner McGreen?
Yeah, I think that was a good idea from Commissioner Slack to talk a little bit about the retail. Oh, sorry about that. It's a good call from Commissioner Slack to talk a little bit about the retail requirement here. It does seem like, I mean, having 85% of the entire ground floor would probably, you know, be undoable, just considering all the other uses that they need to fit in the ground floor of the building there. I guess I'm also kind of curious what the rest of the commission thinks about that condition. I mean, I was thinking potentially changing this to, you know, maybe drop down the percentage of the ground floor total, maybe down to 50% or so, but then saying 100% of the Nicollet Avenue frontage in the, the north building. Or potentially, if you wanted to get into it, we could start to talk about the South Building, but I think, given the grade change on the site, that might start to get kind of complicated for the applicant. And it is, as they've mentioned, it is, you know, an affordable project, and so I think to potentially spend a lot of money on engineering to rearrange the way the buildings are on the site, that might, you know, potentially knock out the project. So I'm curious to see what other people think about it.
Mr. Whittenberg, do you want to clarify?
Commissioners, I just wanted to make a comment about the retail, that given the potential for differing interpretations about what counts as frontage, given the question from Commissioner and Mr. Borax's response on that, we may also want to clarify if there is a frontage condition, exactly what parts of the building we're talking about.
Commissioner Lukey here.
Yeah, I concur with my colleagues. I think the 85% of the square footage is a little excessive, given the constraints and the unique building formation. But I do think that the 85% of, or linear, you know, percentage, given the linear footage of the frontage, is critical. And I would be curious about the live work. I'm leaning towards staff's interpretation that it doesn't comply, but if for some way the design team wanted to present a scenario where the live work unit was a new kind of prototype about how you could actually have a dedicated workspace open to the public, accessible by the public, and your living space behind it, instead of just a glorified townhouse that we're going to say is live work and no one will ever use, I might be able to be persuaded. But it's, it would really have to be something where there has to be hours of operation, and you could enter through the front door, and it's very clearly divided between work and home in a way. I don't know how you do it. I imagine that the living unit itself was going to be pretty much an efficiency attached to this workspace, but otherwise, I just don't see it operating as a traditional commercial entity, which is the intent. I think your traffic counts are down, but this won't help them get higher. So in attempting to kind of connect that, I think it needs to be a priority. And of course, accessibility. You know, let's, let's not make it so people have to schedule for things other people can just walk up to, so.
Commissioner Rockwell?
I am fully in line with, with requiring something approaching 100% retail frontage on the Nicollet side of the north building. I think that we can do something shy of 100% of that frontage to allow for entrances into the residential areas, sort of a classic apartment entry in between commercial spaces. The commercial frontage along 15th Street, it sees 139 feet, and I, by my tally, the frontage that is, that actually fronts on the sidewalk on the north building is 138.4 inches. You've already got that, and you can just reorient, and I think make the pro forma work. But I do think that has to be retail there. You know, the, the, to Commissioner Lukey Pierre's comment about testing these live workspaces, I think that we are doing that in the South Building by allowing that to go forward, if that's the way we go. And I think that that's a, a good way of testing this in kind of a controlled fashion, and, you know, no pressure. I've told one other developer who's testing this idea now, assuming the project goes through appeals. But, you know, we haven't seen these function in the city, and I'm not willing to roll the dice on an entire block frontage on Nicollet Avenue on that concept, but willing to roll the dice on 50%. And, and, you know, and I think that's, frankly, that's giving a, giving you a break, because the, the FAR bonus in Section 548 gives the bonus for 50% of the entire ground floor, FAR. So, you know, that would be 100% in one of these buildings, or something about that, assuming the two buildings are, are equivalent square footage. So, you know, I think we're, we're willing to work with this, and I think this is a good project, and I think this will add a lot to the Streetscape, but I think this is an important piece, and it's one that we've reiterated. And I think that you've got the space, and that you can reorient and keep the number of units. You know, you could move a live work or just a standard two-bedroom over to 15th Street. You know, you can, you can move these pieces around to make this work. And I personally am fine with, with that kind of math and overlooking the 85% floor area recommendation from staff.
All right. Thank you. So it seems like the one really outstanding issue is kind of what, what we want to do in terms of modifying the conditions in both the conditional use permit and the FAR variants related to the lineal footage and, and square footage of, of retail. It seems like the consensus is, is moving toward at least requiring a majority, if not close to all, of the Nicollet Avenue frontage. And by frontage, I think we mean excluding that courtyard area, but including the, the two parts of the building that actually, you know, form the street wall along Nicollet. And we're maybe less concerned about the square footage requirement. I don't know if we wanted to eliminate that altogether, or if we wanted to simply reduce it. It does seem like the priority, though, is, is more having retail along Nicollet, and we're maybe less concerned about the depth or square footage of that. So I don't know if anyone wants to take a stab at a motion or provide further comment on that issue. Mr. Whittenberg?
Just one thought, based on your comments, President Brown, that you might want to consider, if you do go with a frontage requirement, that you, that we do talk about that sort of minimum depth, because one could imagine a scenario where somebody meets the frontage without at all meeting the intent by doing some, you know, six-foot-deep space that's, for all intents and purposes, not usable, this window or something.
All right. Commissioner Slack?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion. Move staff recommendation for Item B, conditional use permit for planned unit development, with modification to Condition Number Two, to read, comply with the intent of mixed-use density bonus. Not less than 85% of Nicollet Avenue frontage of the north building shall be dedicated for commercial uses with a minimum depth of 50 feet.
Five, zero?
Five, zero. You think that's too deep?
That's much deeper than I would have expected.
Twenty five?
Twenty five.
Thirty?
Thirty feet.
All right, thirty. All right, so we have a motion to approve Item B, the conditional use permit for the mixed unit, mixed-use development, with modification to Condition Two, so that it reads to comply with the intent of the density bonus, not less than 85% of the ground floor, excuse me, not less than 85% of the, the lineal footage along Nicollet Avenue, or frontage along Nicollet Avenue is devoted to retail space. And I believe to clarify, we are excluding that courtyard area that faces east from that, from that frontage, and that those spaces are a minimum of 30 feet deep. All right, and we have a second? Okay, we have a second now. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gignan?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
McGreeno?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
Seven zero.
All right, and that motion carries. Item C is the FAR variance. There is also some language pertaining to that commercial requirement. Commissioner Slack?
Move staff recommendation for Item C, variance of the maximum FAR, with a change to Condition Number One, to read the same as the last statement.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Item C, modifying Condition Number One, to require that 85% of the Nicollet Avenue frontage be dedicated to commercial uses with a minimum depth of 30 feet. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
McGreeno?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Gignan?
Right.
Seven zero.
And Commissioner Slack, now for Variance D, since we're proposing that the commercial space is kind of reoriented, do we, do we still need to approve Variance D since it was?
Commissioners, I would still recommend giving them the flexibility to configure.
Add in the way that they choose, including long 15th.
All right, Commissioner Slack?
Move staff recommendations for Item D and E variances, including all conditions.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve variances D and E. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Gignan?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
McGreeno?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. Item F, the site plan review. I know the applicant had, had raised a concern about Condition Three related to the principal entrance. I'm not, I'm not sure that in our questions to staff, we really addressed that. I, although I didn't hear any comments from the commission either about that. Commissioner Slack, do you have any, actually Commissioner Rockwell, do you have something else?
You know, I would be inclined to allow, and can put this in a motion, but to allow the principal entrance to be located greater than eight feet from the property line, with a condition that it be sufficiently lit with pedestrian scale lighting 24 hours a day. I do think that a lot of these buildings with this design have that kind of feature.
All right. Second. So we have, I guess I will take the?
So let me rephrase that as a motion, which is, move to approve site plan, Item F, with Condition Number Three amended, or replaced with a requirement, principal residential entrance to the north building shall be lit with pedestrian scale lighting, well-lit with pedestrian scale lighting 24 hours a day, visible from the street.
All right, and we have a motion and a second to approve Item F, the site plan review, with a modification to Condition Three, to allow the principal entrance of the north building to be located more than eight feet from the property line, provided it has sufficient lighting. Commissioner McGreen?
I wanted to add, I think, a few conditions to site plan review, so I'll just list them off individually. The applicant had indicated that they would be willing to ensure ADA access to the live work units along Nicollet side, so I just want to add that as a condition. Just to phrase that, so I'd make a motion. The applicant shall ensure ADA access to the Nicollet Avenue live work units.
All right, so we have a motion to ensure ADA access to the live work units. Is there a second?
To, I guess, to add a little, as if they were able to be, yeah, from the street. I believe that's what they're saying, so, sorry, it's kind of hard doing it on the fly, to ensure access from the street, as if they were operated as retail space.
All right. Is there a second?
Should I repeat that?
I think, I think we have it. So we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Slack, then Commissioner Rockwell?
In essence, a good idea. You know, I, I guess I'd be a little worried about taking up valuable public realm space by adding accessible entrances to all of the live work. I'd probably be more open to a percentage of live work being accessible, but it's not something that I would vote against.
Commissioner Rockwell?
Just to clarify, so this, this is suggesting something other than the accessible entrance coming in through the building entrance, but accessible entrances to each unit, is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, I guess my concern that I mentioned earlier is that potentially we might build the building, and then if we wanted to actually operate businesses in the space, if they go to get a business license, you know, there might be issues with mixing the residential interior parts of the building with potentially whether it's a business space, I guess, if you're going to be moving customers in and out of those hallways.
I guess I would have a question for staff on what the height of those, or maybe for the applicant, height of those doors and the length of the ramps required at acceptable grade.
The entrances are three feet above grade, and maybe easier to look at this on a floor plan. There isn't that, I don't think you could get the appropriate ramping to each of the units within that space between doors.
Right.
So I don't think that that condition could be met, because this, these are your doors to those units. I don't think that, and then this is the main entrance here into the building, I don't think you could get sufficient ramping into all of those units.
Right, I, there's, just because of the math?
Because of the math, right.
Okay.
To get the rise to run, I mean, for the, for the acceptable grade. And so I, I, I think that would significantly change the front of the building. It would either have to be moved further back, and you'd have to kind of serpentine up to it, or you would have a long run, and you would still miss some of the units, because you wouldn't be at that elevation. So I, while I agree ADA access is, is important, I don't, I don't think it will work in this design as it is tonight. And I want to probably see what that looks like before we were to approve something with that condition.
All right, I guess I see the concern a little bit more, the math issue there, so I will withdraw that motion. Sorry for the confusion there, but I'd also like to add maybe an easier condition, that the applicant shall provide electricity to the bus shelter that'll be reconstructed on the the south side of the site there.
All right, so we have a motion to add a condition requiring that the applicant provide electricity to the bus shelter. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second discussion. Commissioner Magrino, do you have anything to add? Otherwise, I, yeah, I'll ask, I'd like to ask the applicant to, well, I, do you want to respond, or are you indicating you're okay with that?
Can I respond just to that, just to clarify?
Go ahead, if you don't mind, come to the microphone, picked up on the audio.
Thank you for allowing me to respond to that. We've been working with Metro Transit to provide the infrastructure for the electricity for the bus stop. We're willing to do that. I think what I do want to clarify is that the project will not be required to pay the expense for the number of years, for the actual electricity bill for the, for the bus stop. But we will provide the infrastructure for the electricity to the bus stop as part of a project cost.
All right.
And that was?
Infrastructure.
Yeah, that was the intent of the, of the motion.
Thanks. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we can vote on that condition just by voice vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Commissioner Magrino?
One last one, sorry. I live down the street from this, so I'm paying extra close attention to it. I do live on 15th, and that is not a great street for pedestrians and cyclists. People go pretty fast down the street. So I'd like to add a condition of approval, that we bump out the corner, at the corner of 15th and Nicollet, right there. Subject to approval from Public Works.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, for the applicant to work with Public Works to add a bump out to the corner of 15th and Nicollet, provided that Public Works approves of that. Is there any further discussion? I might also ask the applicant if there are any major concerns with that. We're leaving that a little bit open-ended, but wanted to give you an opportunity to respond. If you can come to the microphone, that'd be great.
All right, Jeff Hummer with BKV Group. We have had meetings with Public Works, and there was some discussion about the bump outs on the corner, and I, and I don't think that there's planning yet for that to happen at that particular location. We are providing some infrastructure for, there's some ADA special signaling that's their planning, so we'll be providing infrastructure for that. But I'm not, I don't think that the bump outs are part of the planning for that corner. It may, it still may be playable if there's a recommendation here, though. Thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion on that? We can at least propose that there's another conversation about that. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right, so I think we could perhaps go back to our original motion. Is there any further discussion on the original motion? Now we have amended condition three, we've added eighth and ninth condition. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Gignan?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Briland?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. Finally, we have item G, the preliminary plat. Commissioner Rockwell?
I would like to move approval of item G, preliminary plat.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve item G. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Gignan?
Aye.
Crownsor?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Briland?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item six, and concludes our meeting for today. Committee of the Hall on Thursday. We are adjourned.